And then the.
Okay. Hey, I have eight o'clock, so. Are we recording and we're ready? Okay, I'll go ahead and call this board supervisors meeting to order and and welcome everyone. Appreciate your attendance. First order of business is called order, and I've asked Supervisor David Gomez to lead us in the.
Please join me.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gomez. Uh, next order of business is called to the public. Is there anyone that would like to? Okay, hey, Sherry.
Morning, Sherry Milharrow-Ricardo for Greenly County. Um, I just want to congratulate everybody who were who was elected into office. Um, especially our very own Aaron Miller for the Recorder's Office. I want to just point out. That out of out of the total votes that were cast this election, there was a total of three thousand three forty-one. Sixty-six percent of those votes came out of the Recorder's Office through early balloting. So we have a huge endeavor during election time um for that month prior to Election Day, and so I want to thank everybody. Um, that's involved in that, uh mainly the girls in my office, um but I also want to thank. Angie from the School Board's Office, she was helping out quite a bit, um and and she even helped with translation in some cases. Uh Caroline, who gave up her weekends um to help us before and after the election. Susan from the um Public Works Office who went um transporting ballots from Duncan back and forth. Um, everybody in the Elections Office um and the IT Group for. Everything that everybody has done to help make this successful. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in called the public? It's not an agenda. Good morning, Mr. Guzal.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I just wanted to come and uh.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Stephen Guzal. I represent Modus Pluff Veterans Memorial. On behalf of uh the organization, I wanted to come and uh thank you personally. For uh your help in obtaining the uh the our grant. Like to thank uh David Gomez, uh. Uh Christine Taylor. Reed Larson and the entire board uh for your support in this uh in this project. And especially your blessing on this project. Once again, I thank you. I salute you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in called the public? Okay, if there's no others, then we'll go to Agenda Item Two. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenly County Public Health Service. District and after order of business will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. A consent agenda.
I still move that we approve the consent agendas posted.
I'll second that. Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll now go to Agenda Item Three. Blood Control District, the Board of Supervisor will convene as the Board of Directors. Of the Greenly County Blood Control District and after order of business will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. A consent agenda.
I still move that we approve the consent agendas posting.
I'll second that. Have a motion in seconds. Any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the Board of Supervisors and uh we will now. Go to Agenda Item Five and we will uh canvass the ballots after we have the public hearing, so. Anyway, uh a motion to go into public hearing with on the request by Desiree Daniels to ch- change the zoning district. A partial number three zero zero dash eighty-two dash zero two nine from SR twelve single house residential minimum lot area. Twelve thousand square feet to MRB multiple household residential minimum lot area. Per dwelling unit two thousand square feet. I still move.
Do we adjourn in the public hearing? I'll say thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, we are now in public hearing. I have um. Those, I have Fred E. Sanders, who would like to address the board. Remember. This is, it says item five and. Okay, so we have Freddie Sanders as requested to address the board. Remember you have three minutes. And uh.
He's on all three of them?
Huh?
He's just on two.
I'm just on.
On five.
On five. Yeah, he has uh. Yeah, he has five and then he will also will speak on seven, but he will only speak on five now because that's where we are in. Mr. Sanders, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Real good.
Getting a little cold out there now.
Finally.
Better start these meetings a little later. Anyway, good morning, everybody. I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you. My comments are just following exactly what we read on the on our uh direction. This I just. Representing a lot of the people that have signed some of these. Uh papers uh where they don't want the lots to be rezoned. They want to be kept the way they are. And for the same reasons that are listed here and in your. And your description. Due to the not only a water supply. Uh, if a water supply goes dry, we're not going to have any water for the rest of Loma Linda Estates. So what we're going to do, we're going to have to move or buy start buying water from somebody. As far as I know. At one time it was brought up that maybe they could bring water from Bertie Lee, and that's impossible. But another thing is that both of their wells, it was one well, now both wells have arsenic in them. And they're trying to contain that, clean the water up by large. Uh, filters to filter the water, and I don't know what they're putting in it, but. Uh, I guess it's it's down to the pH is down where they can drink it, you know? So anyway, I I kind of oppose that too because when Loma Linda was built, it was just for the. For the rights that I said here. With a covenant in place, just because they wanted it to be a senior citizen, a retirement thing. And we don't, we object to the noise of the big parties, you know, the extra traffic. Probably any apartment complex has been understand, uh I mean, done, and I understand these people what they want to do. But uh it's always been in place that we can't. Do anything for business on these lots, and I understand that we got to continue that in order to preserve the right of our. Loma Linda Estates. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and I appreciate appreciate what other people. That live here and not, I've been here for twenty-six years. I know Mr. Gomez has been here longer than me and a lot of people that sign these papers that were brought in or called in. I've been here longer than that. But we appreciate that and and that and that's their object is that they don't want the the zoning to change either. You want to preserve that. Thank you very much. And Mr. Gomez has always done a good job for us, so hopefully uh. Everybody can understand that predicament of all the people that are living here in Loma Linda, and we can. Decide on that on on that thing, you know, to do the right thing for for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Paul, uh if I pronounce this wrong, please forgive me. Michaelones?
Michaelones?
Oh. How do you pronounce that, sir?
Michaelones.
Michaelone. Sorry about that. Good morning.
Man, thank you for the opportunity to address this. This is on request by Desiree Daniels to change the zoning district.
Yes.
And this is not, nothing to do with with covenants of the of the Loma Linda subdivision. This is all about zoning. Loma Linda was originally platted and and sub uh. Zoned or single family house. Uh, per lot. And now the request is to change it, and a lot of these lots are very small. And everybody is on a septic system, so. I own. Three lots at the top of the hill. Our septic system, our house is built on one lot, the septic system is built on a second lot. And almost had to have a third one just because of the. Circulation that the the uh septic system doesn't work as as well as it should. These lots are not only we have problems with, you're going to subdivide this down to smaller places. We have no idea what is going to go in on those lots. There's no plan. We don't, we haven't seen anything in in writing. Which. My understanding is they're talking about uh. Duplexes. Rental for whether it's single family or just a person. This, the lots in question are right across from our public water system. We have two wells that are within just about one hundred feet. Of where these septic systems are going to be. You also have quite a distance to get up into these lots, so. I don't want to see. These rezoned. This this was specifically for single family housing, and I know that there's a, there's a uh. A need for housing in the county because of uh just the the amount of people that are in and out of here. But we're not trying to stop. Housing being built. It it, we want to keep it as as it was zoned, or single family housing. And. Not only the the septic system, but the water. Uh, we're in a drought situation. I've worked on and myself and and. Mr. Ramsey have worked on this water system. We know what the problems are with it. There's, there's a lot of drawdown. The the wells are not producing quite as well as as they have in the past. Uh, Bertie Lee has the same uh situation over there. And plus the fact that traffic, it will increase traffic around the clock. People in the subdivision now own their own places. If we have started getting something in it. My time is up.
Thank you so much.
And. If I may, I'm not sure, under public, under number five, we have number six, which.
You can't talk about just our number five.
And so that people understand, we're using Austin's clock to time the three minutes for public comment, so. We usually have it up on the screen, but we had a technical difficulty getting up the uh the timer.
Okay, we have Joe Ramsey, who'd like to talk on Agenda Item. Uh, five. Mr. Ramsey. So you you don't have any additional comments? Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the board in public hearing? Yeah.
Chair, I have a letter to read.
Go ahead, please. Is it on Agenda Item Five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, our office received this letter yesterday. It's from a gentleman who uh has a house in Loma Linda. Uh, wanted to attend but was unable to and asked that we read this letter. So with your permission, I'll just read it verbatim.
Please.
County Board Chairman and Supervisors, I'm writing this letter in strong opposition to the rezoning requests. Of lots one thirty-five and one thirty-six within Loma Linda Estates. It was my desire to attend this meeting in person, but unfortunately a conflict prevents me from being present, so I'm providing this letter of opposition instead. My wife and I are part-time residents of Greenly County, and our families have a long history in the area. We currently own a property within Loma Linda, which has been in my wife's family for nearly fifty years. Simply stated, the requests to rezone these two parcels to allow for smaller property sizes and multifamily units is absolutely not a good fit for Loma Linda. These requests do not fit the character nor the density. Of the surrounding Loma Linda neighborhood. Which was intentionally developed for detached, single-family homes on minimum twelve thousand square foot lots. The requests, if approved, would forever change the character and charm of Loma Linda by allowing. For the placement of multifamily units right smack in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. In an area that wasn't master planned for this type of use and without any type of appropriate buffer mitigation or other considerations for surrounding residents that already live there. Please think about what this type of rezoning approval would do. It would set a bad precedent and would open the door for other similar type of requests in the future. My comments above could be considered subjective as a resident that doesn't want to see change within the neighborhood. But as a professional civil engineer that works in the development community, I can speak to other potential impacts. This decision would have on the immediate neighborhood and community at large. Here are a few quick points. Number one, life safety. Greenie County is one of only a very few, if not the only county in the entire state of Arizona that does not issue building permits to verify compliance. With nationally recognized international building and fire codes. The primary concern is attached units present a substantially increased fire risk, which is. Compounded by the fact that there is no oversight through plan review or inspections by Greenie County. It is a matter of fact that base building codes generally require the installation of. Fire sprinkler systems throughout multifamily buildings containing three or more units. In this location, the fire risk is further compounded by the fact that Loma Linda is located in an area without fire hydrants. Nor a fire station in close proximity. The fire risk would not only be to the proposed attached structures themselves, but would also be a risk to the adjacent neighboring homes. Number two, potable water supply. Loma Linda is serviced by a small private water company. The concern is that the existing infrastructure has required substantial repairs and downtime over the last couple of years. The result of an aging system that requires continual maintenance and repairs. Increasing the density and placing six residents on lots that were intended. Where only two does not help the situation by increasing the overall demand on the water system. Number three, wastewater properties in Loma Linda require individual septic systems for the treatment of wastewater, increasing the density from two residences to six. Will require larger septic systems, including leach fields. The concern is that these larger leach fields will be located in close proximity to the well system. Which provides the potable water supply to Loma Linda. And number four, roads and traffic. The county maintained roads provide access to Loma Linda are not currently. The county maintained roads providing access to Loma Linda are not currently in the best of shape. Increasing the density of homes in the area naturally increases. The where.
In all lack of fairness, you're allowed three minutes, even though it's.
Just allowed three minutes. The one who wrote the letter.
Running out of breath.
You read it fast enough, though. You were good. Okay, is there any other? Public comments in uh public hearing?
It is, I mean, the rule is two minutes.
I'd like to read the rest of it.
Well, but you've already been allotted.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, sorry.
The the board does have the letter as well.
Okay. With that. With that, uh, if there's. No other than, uh. Motion go out of pub. We're out of public hearing and we will go to agenda item six, Hayden LaFloyds. Uh, I guess that's.
That'd be Mister Larson.
Mister Larson.
That's me, Mister Chair. Uh, Hayden. Planning and zoning is a high priority, but at this moment she has a higher priority. Um, I, I don't really have anything to add. Uh, you stated the request already, um, other than you have an exhibit in front of you. And that, that just shows there were many, many letters written by the residents of Loma Linda. And, uh, so those, those areas that are shaded. Represent the parcels. Um, for which letters were written.
The pink parcels?
Yes. And, and in all cases, those letters were written for both. The current agenda item and then the, uh, subsequent agenda item.
Were, were the letters all in opposition? Were they split? Were they?
Yes, you have those letters, I believe, in your packet, but I'm happy to read. Read the letter if you want to have it in the record that way.
I, I'm not sure that we have that letter in our packet.
It's not your packet. I, I don't believe, when did we receive those?
So some were sent to the commission way back in May. There was another, uh, round of letters that we received in our office yesterday.
Yesterday? Is there a, is it a single letter signed by several?
Yes, it's a form letter, um, signed by, uh, multiple people.
Okay. Can you read that? I mean, is it, is it not as long as the law forms?
Cause.
I'm not finding it.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't receive it, and I would. Certainly like to hear what.
It's my understanding was there was a, a letter, a form letter, if you will, assigned by many, many people, um, but we don't need to read one.
And, and, and that's correct, but, but I would like to hear that just because. We did not. Go ahead, please.
Okay, it, it's, uh, addressed to Greenlee Planning and Zoning Office and the subject, uh, is the requests. Um. To change rezoning. So the, again, the, this letter applies to the multiple requests within Loma Linda. We respectfully object to these zoning changes as they seem. To indicate apartment buildings. It is important to us, me. That the original, me in parentheses, that the original zoning of Loma Linda states remain in place. To maintain the integrity of the subdivision. Not to mention additional traffic strain on utilities, et cetera. We respectfully request that the zoning and planning commission at their meeting on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Take into consideration our objections, concerns, and vote no for these zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and could you read those that, that signed it?
Um. That, the, it included, uh, Fred and Billy Sanders. Um, Manuel and Emma Flores, William, Dwayne Sanders, Fred Campbell, Charlie, Yvonne. Dyer. Um, Roy Morales and Bertha Morales, Wayne Gray and Edwina Gray, Liz and. Liz Peralta. Ruben Aguayo and Rowena Aguayo. And there are others. Um, so I may duplicate some of these, but Verna Ramsey. Richard and Patricia Grove, Joe Ramsey. I, I think I already said Fred and Billy Sanders, Terry Roland, Bealyn Roland. Elizabeth Peralta. Uh. Said that name already, Fred Campbell. Emmanuel and Emma Flores, Mister Sanders.
Okay, thank you.
Edwan.
Well, now, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just have a few comments, uh. Your remarks to all this and the concerns of the. My constituents, my district, it's my home, but, uh. You know. I mean, this property that's, that's vacant and has been vacant for many years. Uh, right now, the, the greatest, the best use for this property.
Or move that one over.
What I was saying is that, uh, Loma Linda is, is part of my district and with constituents with concerns over this situation. And, uh, I've lived there since, uh, and built my home in nineteen eighty-one. And, uh, you know, and I've, I've heard through the grapevine that folks were kind of upset that. Why was I able to build a duplex on that, on the property that I purchased next to my home? Well, I went through the planning and zoning process and it was approved. Back in the day when I built those apartments in nineteen ninety-five. And, uh. And being a landlord in not only Greenlee County, but in Graham County, Maricopa County, Pima County. And once in Coconino County. I. Have the vision for, for, uh, rental properties. And with that said. Like I, like I mentioned, this is the, the greatest and best use of this land that's been vacant for so many years. Uh, and we're not talking about hundreds of, of, uh, parcels here. We're talking about the few that are. Within, uh, the subdivision. Of Loma Linda. And, uh, not only that, uh. When all this came about and folks were, were showing interest in building, uh, rental properties in Loma Linda. And it's happened in Bertie Lee, as, as we all know. And it's to accommodate these folks that are living out of their cars, living down at the river, living over at the fitness center. Uh, using, using the facilities there to take a shower, uh. You know, and these are folks and there's folks that are retiring from, from the economy that goes on here. With, uh, the local mine here that is the main employer. Uh, people want to remain here. And, uh, and they also want to invest. Uh, in, in this, in this county. And, uh, so I, I understand your concerns, but I also. Understand the other side of it also, because I, I, I've been there. And, uh. I, I don't disparage, uh, what you all have said. But we have looked into the situation with the water company that. Uh, came in and bought Loma Linda Water and Bertie Lee Water. Uh, we've had some very serious conversations with them. Uh, they have the capacity. To, to provide water for additional, uh. Homes. Apartments. Uh, we have that in writing from them. Their plan is, and I might be speaking out of term because they're not here, but their plan is to. Is to unite both water companies, as you mentioned, Mister Sanders, that there is arsenic in the water in Bertie Lee. But when you unite them and blend them together, you eliminate that situation and they've. Have, we've had some serious conversations about that. Uh. So, and, and along with the septic tank system, I understand that also, you know, uh. Yeah, we're all on septic tanks out there because we don't have a sewer system. And, you know. I, I've worked on, on, on housing for this county for quite some time. Actually, that was my platform when I ran for office. Coming from the private sector with a, with you, from Southwest Gas as a. The utility of Southwest Gas and. I also pursued that situation where I convinced Nat, uh, Southwest Gas to provide natural gas to everyone in Loma Linda and Bertie Lee. Everyone was sitting with a two hundred and fifty gallon tank on the side of their house and, uh. Southwest Gas. Indicated to me. There, not everyone's going to sign up and hook up. And I said. Yeah, they are. Cause I went and I polled everybody in, in Loma Linda and Bertie Lee.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Why do we only get three minutes to talk about our, our objections? And you've been, you've been going on much longer than three minutes.
Well, I'm just, I'm just addressing your concerns, sir.
This, this is a board of supervisors meeting. He is a board member and thus he, it being our meeting, he is allowed. The time he needs. Uh, the three-minute limitation is, uh, something that, that. Almost all, a lot of, uh, public meetings have, uh, especially where you have lots of, uh. People with, with concerns and, uh. And that's why Mister Supervisor Gomez is allotted the time that. It's our meeting. Thank you.
So a, a, as I was saying, you know, and I, I, I don't think there's. Anyone in, in the subdivision of Bertie Lee or Loma Linda that. Uh, isn't on natural gas. But with that said, and you know, and that's, that's, that's growth and that's, uh. And, and this entire county i- is, is, is just. Struggling for, for rooftops, uh, as I mentioned. We have people calling our office just constantly, uh. Looking into where people can, uh, build, uh, you know, and we have the issues where we, we, we're working on a. On a three hundred and twenty-acre parcel over in York, but, uh, we hit a wall where, uh. There was a court order that took the water rights away from that, uh, family, uh, for agriculture. And could be used for domestic use, residential use, but. Through the court order, uh. The local tribe here nearby in the Hilo watershed, uh, didn't allow it. They, and, and, uh. We, I reached out to him numerous times to sit down and talk to them about this and, and we just couldn't, couldn't gain any. Any progress on it. So we decided to pull out of that area and here we are with a few folks that are wanting to build, uh, a duplex. Possibly a triplex. And, uh, and I, like I said, I understand your concerns, but I also see the other side of it. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And, uh, I just thought I would mention that to you because we have reached out to the water company. Both water, uh, for both Loma Linda and Bertie Lee and they've. Given us some, some positive feedback on the water system that. That, as we all know, has been neglected for, for many, many, many years because the owner that used to own it. Uh, and I'm talking about the original owner and then the folks that bought it after him, uh, struggled, uh, to maintain that system. And, but this company that's in here now, uh, they're nationwide and, and many locations, many locations in Arizona. And, uh. So I feel very confident that, uh. I live there. I, I don't want to run out of water. And, uh, so anyway, th- those are my personal. Words in regards to this and. I'll leave it at that.
Yes. Mister Chairman, um, yeah, I, I struggled with this one because this is, this is obviously one that we, we desperately need housing. We desperately need housing, uh, in Greenlee County for the, for the workers, um. Uh, the people that come to this community, but it was zoned as single family units. Um, can I ask, Reed, how long have these been zoned as single family units and stayed abandoned?
I, I don't know, Mister Campbell. I, I, I would, if I had to guess, I would say, if you look at the date on the plat- that, that the rezoning would be in that same timeframe, so.
Nineteen sixty-eight?
Thereabouts, yes, sir.
And. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no. The, so my, my, my struggle is, is that we need, we need rooftops. We need. Family dwellings, right? We need people to be able to stay there. The alternative is to say, hey, we want single family units to be built there. But it's been fifty years and there haven't been any single family units built there. And I'm, so there's my, there's my difficulty. Um, so that's all I gotta, I gotta think about it.
And, uh. My comments go along with, with Supervisor, uh, Campbells. You, you know, a- and we've tried several different options to get housing. It, it, there's no secret that the waiting list, uh, we have a great employer up there and. That pays well, uh. You know, what would family housing do for our schools? Uh, for our community, for our businesses. Uh, you know, right now they all go to, to Safford and they commute. How many fatalities have happened on that one ninety-one? It's, it's, you know, when they could be living here. And, and contributing to our economy. A- and not the economy of, of our neighbors. And so I, I struggle with this, you know, when you, when you bought that property fifty years ago, you. I understand that. It's, uh. And yet this land is set vacant and. Nobody's, no more single housing units have come in and we have an opportunity to. To, uh, and we've checked the water out as it, as Supervisor Gomez has. This, this board has. Been. Trying to get. Homes built here. For. Many, many years. And it, and, uh. This just seems like an opportunity that we can, we can put to use some land now, uh. There's, uh. It just seems like it's, it, it could be a win for everyone, for our communities, for our schools, and, uh. Those are my thoughts.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Oh, Reed, I'm sorry. I wanted. So is there, I know that the. Rezoning is going, you know, the, the request is to multiple household residential, and I believe that the plan is a duplex, possibly. Triplex on each one of those lots. So that would be a max of. Six residents on those two plots. Is that the way I understand it?
Um, I, it might be appropriate to invite the applicant to, to address that, um. The information we received and the way we interpreted it was. That are, there, you have before you two different, uh, rezone applications. They're next to each other. And I believe the applicants intended to build a triplex on one of those parcels. And the reason I'm splitting hairs here is because one of those parcels used to be two individual. Flatted parcels. They've been combined. So my understanding is that one applicant is going to build a triplex on one, the bigger parcel. The second applicant that's coming up on your agenda is going to build a triplex on their parcel. But I would invite them forward to clarify that and, and just would remind you the board that. The applicants, when they submit a application for a rezone, they're not required to tell us. Give specifics on what they're going to do with those parcels. It's helpful when they do because it helps you that decision makers understand. What that use is going to be, but they're not necessarily. Required to, to tell you. They, they just need to say, we want to rezone it to this, and then legally they're allowed any use that that zone permits, but. This isn't necessarily the time where you have to figure out the onsite disposal and the setbacks and things like that. There's procedures in place later on in time to. To address those questions.
But if my concerns were. You know, if, if, if my thought process is that I, that I. Would be okay with a triplex or a duplex, right? But I wouldn't be okay with, you know, two stories, you know what I mean? Then there'd be twelve in that, okay, twelve apartments in that location. How, how do I ensure, or how do we ensure that that doesn't happen?
I, I, I. I'm gonna give you a tentative answer. And it's a word called steps. And then I'm going to defer to your county attorney to elaborate. Or, or your county administrator.
Oh.
In other words, in short, the process is such that the board, either the commission or the board in this case. Could say, we'll grant the resort, rezone, provided that you stipulate. That duplex, triplex, no, you know, no more than, uh, triplex, whatever the, the stipulation could be. That duplex, triplex, no, you know, no more than triplex, whatever the, the stipulation could be. But at that point you would then, you could limit the rezone, provided they comply with the, the stipulations or the, the limitations, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Reed, I have a, another question, several of them, these, these. Systems currently are septic systems. And, and you do, they said that there is, one of these parcels is in proximity to, I assume, one of the wells, which is. What guaranteed the, the residents there that the, the well won't be contaminated? Because I, I think that's a, a concern that needs to be addressed.
Without going down an engineering rabbit hole, I get onto that and you'll have to order pizza. For lunch, but, but an, a, a properly functioning onsite disposal system is very, very, very good at treating wastewater. It just, all of the bad stuff gets eaten. Before it gets even close to the, the water table in an ideal situation. I, I do know that there is a well that's down gradient. It's, uh. What would be, I guess, north and west of, of these parcels in question. So that is a legitimate concern. But these applicants, as they move forward with their plans, they will have to interact with the health department and they will have to. Demonstrate to the health department that, so, and let's just use a triplex for an example. There, there will be a design flow assigned to that triplex. And they'll have to show the health department that they can put an onsite. Treatment and disposal system on that property that'll work and that will protect the.
So the long and short of it is, is the residents that are there are, have. Pretty good assurance that their water will not be contaminated and, and those issues will be addressed.
Yeah, and, and the answer may be one that, that they don't like because of the constraints on the lot, lot. Lot size, the soil may not perk well. And they may have to move to an alternative treatment system, which those are certainly out there that are more expensive and harder to maintain, but that would be an option to allow them.
But those concerns are addressed before.
Yes, sir.
Free and.
And if you look at the map, but just to comment, if you look at the map, there's homes already near there.
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to address some of the concerns that I, that I heard. There, so, so. The water's taken care of, the septic.
Yeah, this nice lady behind me pointed out that they do have to stay a hundred feet away from the well. That's a step back.
That's common. Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, are, are we ready to vote?
Well, is there any, yes, if there's anybody else that has a comment out there.
We're in, we're in, we're in our part of the meeting. We have public, so. Anyway, motion would be in order.
Do, are we at the stage of approval or disapproval?
Yes.
An item number five?
Number six.
Number six.
Yes.
Okay. Well, with everything that has been said. I so moved that we consider a request by Desiree Daniels to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eighty-two dash zero two nine. From SR twelve, single household residential minimum lot area twelve thousand square feet. To MR dash B, multiple household residential minimum lot area per dwelling unit two thousand square feet. This request was initially heard at the five twenty-three, twenty-four P and Z commission meeting. But the commission failed to garner enough support for any recommendation to the board of supervisors.
If I might make one suggestion, you said that you consider, I would suggest the motion either say approve or disapprove.
Approve.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. With, with everything as presented in regards to the, to. To the water system, to the septic tanks. Installations and as presented by. And answered by the. Greenlee County engineer.
Point of preference before I second. Not at this point, not.
No, no.
The. Can I amend? The motion to include to the max of a triplex. So on that lot.
Yes, the, if, if you wish to include a stipulation and reading Gary backing up, I would say to you, wish to include a stipulation. Then it would need to be part of the motion to approve the rezoning change. Is that accurate?
You'll include that. I'll second it.
If they guys, they're shocked with Desiree, can we go through mine? As I'm the other one.
We have, we have another public hearing coming.
But, so, so if I might suggest a clean motion, it would be. A motion to approve a request by Desiree Daniels to change the zoning as set forth in the agenda. With the stipulation that it be no more than.
A triplex.
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 Per lot.
And, and now that will be determined also by the engineers. Okay.
So if, if for some reason the septic doesn't work, that.
Yeah, exactly. It could go down to a duplex. Correct. Yeah.
And with the stipulation, that valid motion? So that, that would be my suggested motion.
Okay.
So move, so move. I'll second that.
Here we have a motion and second. Would you please restate the motion so there's, if there's clarity for the record?
It is a motion to approve the request by Desiree Daniels to change the zoning district of parcel. Three hundred dash eighty-two dash twenty-nine from SR twelve, single household residential minimum water in twelve thousand square feet to. MR dash B, multi- multiple house, household residential minimum lot. Per area dwelling unit two thousand square feet. Subject to the stipulation that there be no more than a triplex built on the parcel.
Okay, and the motion is understood.
That's seconded.
Okay, and seconded. So all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now go into agenda item seven. A motion to go into public hearing by Clark and Theresa Hardcastle to change the zoning parcel of. Zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eighty-two dash zero one nine from SR. Twelve, single household residential minimum lot size of twelve thousand square. Feet to MR dash B, multiple household residential minimum lot area. Per dwelling unit two thousand square foot.
I so move that we move into public hearing.
All right. I'll second that.
We have motion and second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, we are now into a public hearing. To talk on this, agenda item seven in public hearing, Mr. Sanders. You have three minutes, please.
Now, basically I'm going to repeat the same comments, but, but I went and added to that is about. Going back to that water supply that, you know, I'd be the first one to oppose. Mixing Bertie Lee water with our water because ours is clear water, good water. And it'd be a danger to put that. Mix them together just to provide, as you say, I've never heard that, that they would mix it and it would lower the, the. Amount of arsenic in the water, but I would be the first one to oppose that because. I don't think it's right. And some of these people, you know, just like I, we all got lots right here. I got an extra lot next to my house too. But I think, and I, I know the rules and I know that the zoning has to be changed, but I would say that. We say that we're short of housing. People that have lots, they want to build a house, they can build a house and sell the house. Instead of building multiple apartments. Because that's going to take more, bigger septic tanks possibly. More water usage and more noise. I mean, if it's controlled in one way, probably, like you have done that, as you know. But a lot of people don't do that. And before you know it, you have a, a mess, you know, you know. So that's all I have to say. We, we've actually repeated the same thing. And I, I guess all these letters represent the people from Loma Linda that are against the rezoning. Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Michaelonius.
This zoning request. Back in May of this year, it was on the agenda for the, the. P and Z commission. It was, the motion was made. To approve. Now let's see. Hardner. Request by trees. The Commissioner Bettner moved to approve the, the request. It was seconded. Three fifths of the commissioners, and I don't know whether it's three fifths because a majority. Of a vote. To approve or deny is all that's required, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. It's stating here, three fifths of the commissioners did not approve the motion. The motion died. It's recommended that this motion not be approved by the commissioners. Why are we even discussing this now? It was denied by the, by the planning and zoning commission and on. Back in May, May twenty-third. Why are we discussing this now?
Do you want me to define that? So basically when, when the. Planning zoning commission makes a, a recommendation, it's a recommendation of the board. Ultimately, it's the board that makes the final decision. So they, they still have a final decision whether it's approved or whether it's denied by the planning and zoning commission.
Well, it says no recommendations were made by the planning and zoning. It was recommended by planning and zoning that this. Request be denied.
Yeah, but what you were, that's not what you're talking about. You were saying that, what you're saying is if they denied it, that, that the, why is the board discussing it?
We're not discussing any of the other ones that were denied during that planning and zoning meeting. By. Now, let's see.
Just ultimately, ultimately.
There were other, there were other. Issues on this same. Fact of, of lots being rezoned for multiple family, multiple housing. And they were denied. Why aren't we discussing any of those in Loma Linda?
Okay, but I'm just, we're talking about this particular item. So if, if the, if the planning zoning commission denied it, they could still approve it. If the, if the planning and zoning, uh, zoning commission approved it, they could still deny it. So they still have the authority to make the ultimate decision, isn't it?
And my assumption is, if you don't mind, if, if my assumption is that we've already probably covered those other items previous to this meeting.
And can, can we ask what the, what the decision was on those?
Okay, you tell me which one specifically you're talking about.
Mr. Chair, um, that. To Mr. Michaelonis's point, I, I'm not sure that we accurately captured, we meaning the planning and zoning office. What happened in that meeting back in May. The way we presented it to the board was that, that the commission chose, they just punted the football. Without a recommendation, one way or the other, to approve or deny. What Paul's contention is, the, the commission at that time actually did vote to deny. What I would submit to Paul and to you is that that's not entirely relevant at this point. Whether they approved or denied or chose not to take any action, it's still your. Right and obligation to, to act on the motion before you. And, and some of the other agenda items, Paul and, and Mr. Chair. If the applicant chooses, receives an unfavorable recommendation from the commission, some of them choose not to move forward after that. To take it to the board. And Hayden would be better able to. Get into the specifics of that. But I'm sure that was the case for some of them.
Okay, there's another one request. Request by Justin Karchner to change the zoning of parcel three hundred dash eighty-three dash eighteen. To, for nine thousand to a transitional, two thousand square feet. That motion was denied. Now we're looking at the same lots, then one right next to another. Why aren't we discussing those?
And I, I can't tell you for.
And a request by Clinton Petros. Parcel three hundred dash eight-three dash oh one five. Changing a nine thousand square foot to three thousand. Lots are too small. The motion was denied. We aren't discussing that. This was in the same, and it's in Loma Linda on the same situation that we're discussing on. These three lots right now. And, and we're not, we're not. You're not taking up any of those motions. So I would like to know what, what the decision was.
My understanding is that that's coming, right?
Yeah, we, we've been talking with Mr. Petros.
Yeah, those are, those are coming in, in, in one of our next meetings.
Yeah, we're working with Mr. Petros to schedule him for future meeting. In the case of Mr. Mr. Karchner, I believe that he just dropped his request once he got an unfavorable recommendation from.
And. Same thing. We're not denying anybody anything to be able to build single family homes in any lots in, in Loma Linda. And there are built, there are single family homes that have been built within the last year or two. And there's another one getting set. The land has been cleared right down the street from this area. There's nothing wrong with building a single family. The best use for that land is to build a single family home on it. According to the, to the current planning and zone, changing zoning laws in there because. We have, you have no building codes, you have no inspectors, even for, for a, a septic system. Somebody comes out, looks at it, watches, take a protest, and then it's up to whoever's building the, they're putting in the septic system. To make, to build it to specs, but there's no. Accountability from the, from the county to, to, to inspect those after it's been put in. And I had one put in right next door to us. There was nobody out there to inspect anything. And you have no inspectors on building codes. You have no building codes.
Thank you.
The inspections on the septic are handled through the health department, correct?
They're handled after they do it.
Yeah.
And they inspect after.
And they inspect after.
Been told on that.
Okay, we also have Joe Ramsey.
He's, he's, he's under the weather.
Okay.
Comments.
Thank you.
Michaelonis.
Uh, Clark Hard. Is that Case?
Hardcastle.
Castle, okay. Okay, yes. Hardcase.
My name's Clark Hardcastle. I'm the ones trying to change the. Property things there. And just, I mean.
Yeah, just pull the mic closer.
There you.
All right. Yeah. I don't mean to. Upset everybody over this, but one of the things that I, I will point out is that. I have, they're, they're saying that we're not going to go through the. Proper procedures and all this and that. I am. I've already talked to a developer. I've talked to the septic guy, which they do inspect them out there. You know, there's, there's a need for a change. I understand people don't like change. I don't like change, but. My land was destroyed when I bought that second piece. Nobody really worried about it too much. So with that being said, I said, you know what? I got to use for this land now. People's going to go in there and just tear it up. Then I'm going to do something about it. My daughter also, you know. All I'm trying to do is to support my, myself, my wife and my daughters. My, my, myself, my wife and my daughters. And I'm not just gonna let anybody rent there. I also have rentals. And I've done very well on who I picked for renting from me. My houses don't get destroyed. My trailers don't get destroyed. You know, my daughter lives there. I'm not gonna bring in nothing that's gonna cause harm in the neighborhood. And with the location of that, I don't understand the. Whether I build a triplex or a duplex or whatever, or put trailers in there. Whatever. It's, it's, uh, the water's available. I don't see how my land is going to destroy. The, the, the well system or the septic. You know, the land. Whether, no matter what I put there, there's, I'm still gonna use the water. I'm gonna build a septic tank. You know, it's. Arguments are. I understand their feelings, but I also have feelings. I, I, I don't know what else to say. It's been ongoing for a long time now. And. The other thing is, I've talked to Mister Ramsey. I enjoy the visits with Mister Ramsey when I go down there, visit my daughter. I've known Sanders for a very long time. Uh, a lot of people on the post list, they talk to me. Nobody has ever asked me, Clark, what are your actual plans going to be there? Nobody has asked me, what do you plan on doing? As far as I know, I'm building a twenty unit lot, three stories high. You know, and that's not true. There's not that much land there. Well, my daughters, you know, maybe we'll have a duplex, maybe we'll have something, but on mine. You know, maybe a triplex. You know? If I was gonna build all that other stuff, I wouldn't need this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, that's all the requests I have. Yes. Go ahead.
This. Mister Laws, who wrote the letter, he wrote that letter for both of these agenda items. I don't know if it's necessary for me to read it again, but. Just want the record to show that it does apply to this item as well as the other letters that we talked about previously.
And they will go into the. Yes. With that, uh, we'll go out of, uh, public hearing and we'll go to agenda item eight. And discussion action to consider the request by Clark and Teresa Hardcastle to change. The zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eighty-two dash zero-one-nine from. SR twelve, single household residential minimum lot area of twelve thousand square feet to MR. B, multiple household residential minimum lot area per dwelling unit, two thousand square foot. And so. I just had a question real quick. Reed is lot one thirty-five and one thirty-four together? Uh, is it considered? We have a little.
If you, if you look at that exhibit that I provided you. Uh, Mister Hardcastle purchased a parcel. That is the combination of two lots in Loma Linda.
And is that one thirty-five and one thirty-four?
That's the bluish one.
All the blue?
Yeah.
All the blue.
Yeah, the, the prior applicant, Mrs. Daniels, has the smaller parcel.
Thank you.
So it's two lots, but one person.
Okay. This is very similar to the other one.
I saw, I saw move that we approve a request by Clark and Teresa Hardcastle to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eighty-two. Dash zero-one-nine from SR twelve. Single household residential minimum lot area twelve thousand square feet. To MR dash B, multiple household residential minimum lot area per dwelling unit, two thousand square feet.
With, with.
Stipulations pertaining to the previous one.
Well.
That no more than a triplex. And no more than a triplex.
Correct. Uh, second that. Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there a discussion? I, I know this is. I, if I lived there, I'd probably be a little upset too, but I, I think this, this is progress and, and, uh. I, I think there will, the planning and zoning and, and the health department, they will. Help where those residents are, are there. Their health is, isn't, uh, endangered and, and so with that, those are my comments. If there's no further. Um. We'll go ahead and vote on the ma- motion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We will now go, uh, a request to agenda item number nine. Uh. A request by Brittany Wallace to change the zoning dist-. District of parcel number three hundred dash fifty-seven dash oh-seven-four-A from RU thirty-six. Rural minimum lot area thirty-six acres to MH eighteen RV park minimum lot. Area of eighteen, a hundred square foot. Uh, motion would be in order. I believe we adjourned in the public hearing.
I second that motion.
That motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. We are now in the public hearing. On that, we have, uh, Corina Rodriguez. Good morning.
Excuse my nervousness. I've never done this before, but I just wanted to speak on, on my family's behalf. Um, I understand progress and change. I work for a mine that does that consistently all the time. So, but I do however, have property that this is gonna impede upon and be right against my home. The border of my home. Um, I do have animals. I don't. I'm just concerned with the traffic that's gonna be coming in and out of that area. My concerns about water and septic are the same as you've heard previously from others in zoning areas. Um. Again, we have multiple RV parks in the York area that aren't even full, and I've addressed those personally. So it, to bring. RV, an RV park on my backyard kind of frustrates me and, and it's upsetting very much so. I understand people wanting to make a buck because we need roofs over people's heads. I understand it. But an RV park in that small of an area is ridiculous. Our traffic has increased horribly through that area. Our kids can't even walk to school because people are zooming up and down our main street. Um, we have to do a lot of things in order to change that area to accommodate additional peoples coming in there. And, um, it's just, um, not a good place to set an RV park. And again, I've done my due diligence and gone to these RV parks and asked, how come these lots are empty? You have multiple lots empty at several of the RP parks that are already currently there. And then to bring in three more behind me, I, I just don't see the benefit of that, especially right behind our home. And, um. It just doesn't sit well with us. Um, I did write a letter. You have it there. I also have my signed letter here. Um, for the reasonings behind our feelings. I don't necessarily need to read it out loud. Um, but I have presented it to you and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Baieho.
Uh, my name's Eddie Baieho and I live on, uh, Fairway on Cart Street. And I agree with, uh, what Corina's been stating here. Uh, we moved out there over sixteen years ago. We wanted to do a little bit of country living. Get away from the, all the hullabaloo and Maranty and Clifton. Turned out to be a nice community, but now it's growing. There's a lot of new homes being built. Our, my main concern is, like Corina said, the water supply, the septic system. It's a growing area. Traffic is a big concern right now. We have a lot of, uh, people that have moved out there with children. It seems that Cart Street now is the main throughfare across the Arroyo for the new homes that are being built over there. We have children, little children walking from Fairway to their homes. Yet we have an influx of traffic, people running up and down those streets. And I would like to see maybe some signs put up, you know, caution, children in area. Uh, also, on the way in, we counted over eight RV parks. I, I don't see a need for another RV park out there. And also, um. One thing that I would like to, to discuss, really, if you've ever been out there, there's an influx of new homes being built on Fairway. You should see some of the garbage, trash thrown on the road. Okay, that's another concern too. Traffic back and forth. Well, at this point, I would like to say thank you to the co-op. The Boyshrooms co-op deserve a big slap on the back. I've seen them making their rounds, reading their meters, picking up garbage. I would like to say a big thank you to them. But at this point, I agree with Corina. I don't see another need for another RV park out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor Baieho. Uh, Marilyn Thompson. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm very nervous. I've never done this either, so, but. My concern is, I do know we need more homes for the miners. But, single-family homes, because I live in an area where there's single-family homes. We don't need an RV park, even if it's gonna be three or whatever in our area. Um. With progress, you have. More traffic, you have things you have to deal with. Well, I understand that and we're dealing with them. And hopefully we can even get some speed bumps down Fairway because, not Fairway, but, um, Cart, because they fly through there. But, like I said, having an RVs, whether it's one or three plugged in or whatever, or five, um. That area, single-family homes. And we'd like to keep it that way. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Brittany Wallace. Good morning, Brittany.
Hi. Um, first off, thank you, Mister Gomez, for your, um, thoughts and what you shared on such an unpopular, um, topic. I appreciate it. Um. I hear what the people in York are saying. I understand. Their concerns when you hear RV park, that sounds very big and very scary. Um. Every time I call RV parks, um, there's very little, if no spaces available. Um, and this. I wouldn't want to call this an RV park because there are only gonna be four slots. Um, but as of right now, with the planning and zoning, even if you have one RV, you have to rezone. Um, so I, I have to call it that with four. Um, I, driving around Greenland County, you see a lot of, um, houses with. Two or three RVs on it, just of their own. Um, so technically they would have to rezone also. Um, so I'm just trying to do the proper thing. Um. So I apologize. Last time there was a map up here and there's no map, so I shouldn't have relied on that. Um, they're worried about traffic, which I can understand. There are a lot of homes going up, um, in that area. Um, so the way where mine is, there's only two other, I have two other neighbors, um. Which both know about the, you know, RV park, the four slots. They know about it and they're okay with it. They're, one of them actually said, hey, you should do this. And I'm like, yeah, that's a good idea. Um, there's no one else on our actual street. It's a dead end. And in order to get to our street, you do have to go down other streets, but there's three ways to get there. There's three streets to get there. Yes, Clark is one of them. Actually, don't go down Clark. Um. I go down Callaway. I just, I don't know, but there's three ways to get there. Um. And even if you're building a big, single-family home, most people don't just have one car. And a single-family home. Most people have two, three cars for a family. Um, so I don't know that my four vehicles is gonna make much more of a difference than what's already growing there. There's houses being built in the front. There's, uh, modules being put in the back. Um. I think if I were to build a single-family home, we don't know how many vehicles they would have. They could have two, they could have four. Um. With the septic, the septic's already there. Um, it's already been. Um, the county does come out and it was actually too close to the neighbor's well, so we did have to move it. Um. And they made sure that we did that. They're very cautious about that. Um.
We're, we're trying to bring that up.
Yes, while they're working on that. So this is similar to earlier agenda items. That you addressed this. This neighbor actually was traveling from Indiana to attend this board meeting and. I believe she had car trouble anyway. She got waylaid. Uh, wasn't able to make it and so she, um, sent a letter for me to read and I'm gonna pass it down.
Once again, you have three minutes.
I'm, I'm gonna go fast. And, uh. If Derek can, be a turn another head the right way. I'm always gonna read the most recent letter. Cause I'll probably run out of time. So this, the second one that I'm passing out is the most recent one.
Once again, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Okay, start the clock. Uh, and this is from, uh. Nancy Spencer Morris. Mister Larson, thank you for presenting these comments to the Board of Supervisors in my absence. I will make it to Clifton today, but not in time for the meeting. As I mentioned, I had written some comments when I first became aware of this proposal. I was assured by Bianca Castaneda that tho- those would be presented to the board as well. And those are the comments you have in your hand. Below are the comments I would like the board to also consider regarding the request to rezone parcel. Three hundred dash fifty-seven dash oh-seven-four-A from RU thirty-six to MH dash eighteen. In general, the request is lacking sufficient information and leaves the impression that the applicant is given carte blanche to alter this residential land parcel into a commercial business. Before this request should be considered, very specific detailed information. Should be provided to all concerned parties and the board. Given the vague description of the rezoning request, it appears the applicant has not. Or the information has not been provided to concerned neighbors complied with the reasoning. And I think she meant to say rezoning, application requirements. And potentially county rezoning ordinances. Below is a partial list of the ordinances that have been, to my knowledge, inadequately addressed. And additional comments, questions. Section four oh three B of the zoning regulations, particularly the requirement to state how the amendment will benefit and promote the public health. Safety, convenience, and general welfare. Four oh four D, has a preliminary site plan been submitted? Has the required traffic impact statement been attained? Four oh six B dot B, site plan approval. Has the applicant fully and definitively stated what the proposal is as required in the site plan approval section? Have the requirements stated in section six oh two, six oh eight, and six ten? Then addressed in the site altering proposal? Does the site plan conform to state ADQ requirements? Where will the septic systems be placed? What will be the water source if wells? Where will they be dug? How deep? Have those permits been obtained from the state? Have the required setbacks from adjoining property lines been established and considered in this request? Four oh six. Point eight, point six, access. It is assumed access will be from Ping Drive. This is a point of contention between the county and myself that needs to be resolved before anything is done. According to the county assessment records, I own and have been paying taxes on the road. There is no recorded easement granted to the county. Or other party. I have approached the county at least four times. I have approached the county at least four times regarding this matter, and no action has been taken. As stated, this issue needs, and potential access needs to be resolved prior to other decisions being made. Section four oh six point A, variances and permits. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is from the assessor's website, um, this is out a little bit, so you get an idea of, of the context of where the lot is. The lot is circled in blue, um. See if I can, if you can help me, uh.
Zoom.
Let's go this way, I can zoom in, I just wanna remove a little bit of the clutter of the parcel numbers. Um, so, highway, this is, um, Fairway. Browse it, here's highway seventy-five, so this is what might be referred to as the backside of, of, uh, the York community. Zooming in. That's more physical, you know, depiction of what's on the property at the moment.
What's the size of that property, four acres?
Two acres.
Two acres?
Two acres.
Even go in or out?
Can you go out a little bit, please?
Is that good?
Yeah, thank you. To me, it looks like it's surrounded by nothing but single-family residences.
Where, where is Mrs. Wallace's home? Yeah, next to that.
May I show?
Sure.
I'll bring it back out a little bit.
So, this is my home. Before I say anything wrong, this is my home right here. This is the property that I believe we're speaking to, right? Yeah, that's the property, and then, I don't know, from down here, this is my home right here. Yeah, sure is, and the horse, and the steer, and the goats. Eating everything else right there, and then this is the Foster's residence right here. Mr. Madrid's residence right here, all this right here used to be Mr. Bird's residence before it was purchased. And Lonnie Bird had that property for many, many years. The gambles used to live here before we purchased it from them, and I lived there fifteen years, and this is all residential. So, this road that, that they have to come back here on, there's only a few that live back there, so. I believe their property is gonna be over here in this area. Am I correct? You, Mr. Bio. With that little, use that little white thing, go up, right there.
Do you wanna see other RVs, Bobby?
Yes, please, please.
So, all this is trees, I actually went this morning and took pictures, the RVs are gonna be right here, one, two, three, four. And I took pictures from here out, you actually can't see the neighbors at all with all the trees. So, it's not the appearance that's going to bother them, it is the said traffic that they're saying, because you really, you can't, I cannot see my neighbors.
So, with that being said, we weren't told any of that, we were just told an RV park is gonna be going in there. And some of us did, we started, some of us didn't receive letters for the initial for, for the presentation, whatever you call it, so we didn't know what was going in there, we didn't have any clue. So, our assumptions are, we're gonna have an RV, a full RV park in there. And, um, that's all we've been told, so we didn't know this stuff, so it would've been, it would've been great to have heard what the plan was before we had to come here.
Don't, excuse me, once it gets zoned, then it's done to put in what you would like, but if they could, if she could survey it and have it, it's zoned for single-family homes, there's enough there, enough room to put in several single-family homes. You know, because, like you said, we need more homes out here. But, um, ones that are permanent, ones that don't.
That's not the ask, that's not the ask, yeah. Thank you.
And that, that rooftop to the right, in that blue area, is the home that's on there?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, is that, that your residence, Ms. Wallace?
Yeah, that's your residence?
Home, um, and it needs to be fixed up, so one of the RVs will be one of the people helping fix up.
A- and the, the, you, you don't plan on taking out any of the trees?
No, I like the trees, I like the privacy, and I realize there's more RV parks. Um, but they also like privacy, so with the four RVs that will be there, it'll appeal to them because it's not a real RV park, there's privacy, and those trees are gonna stay.
And, and four is your definite limit that, that?
Yes, because I would like to eventually build a house there, but at the time, I cannot do that right now. So, I don't want those RVs to stay indefinitely.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the information provided from our planning and zoning director was that there would be a maximum of three, I don't know if that's it's, it, so, three, three's the number?
No, uh, Mr. Chair, I believe she can, uh, clarify that there would be a maximum of three RVs, but she still would like the latitude to have a single-family residence. So, call out a four, total, four, total dwellings. Three RVs and a, and a site-built house.
There'll be a tiny home, three RVs and a tiny home.
And.
I don't know, I, I might ask a question, Corina made the comment that if she would've known, is she still there?
Yeah, she is there.
Yeah, I just, I think, once we rezone and we allow X amount of whatever in there, who's to say that, I know you have to come back and rezone, it's just that we have single living, there are people living in that area, why not just build a house? I mean, probably not at the time, but you have the land to build, see, a couple houses in that, and zone it for housing instead of a so-called, and I hate to keep using the term RV park, I mean. I don't, that's just. And, and I have the, my, my parts, sorry, I have done my part and checking with the other RV places, and there are ample RV parks out there that do have lots available, I wouldn't say that if it weren't true. And so, I have gone out and done that, and I shouldn't have to go out to that, I've gone out and done that because I'm worried that this is gonna turn into a bigger situation than what's it's re-zoned.
Once you allow one person to do that, and you get things re-zoned.
Well, the girl you did, your Shall we, uh, I, let's go out of, uh, public hearing, and we'll, we'll go into, uh.
Did that max still up, gentlemen?
Yes, and we'll go into, uh, agenda item ten. And, uh, it's discussion action on a request by Brittany Wallace to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash fifty-seven dash oh seven four A from RU thirty-six, rural minimum lot area thirty-six acre to MH dash eighteen, RV park, minimum lot area eighteen hundred square feet, this. And, and, uh. So, from Mrs. Wallace, she's doubt there's being specific that there will only be three RVs there with a, uh, home. And so, for a total of four, and there's already a home there. Uh. So, I'll open it up for discussion, yes, Ron.
Well, I think, um, you know, again, uh, you know, going into this, you know, you see, you know, single-family residents surrounding really this property, um. And there's a single-family resident on this property, I get the fact, though, that, you know, if you put these three RVs there, then that will help to hopefully create funds to be able to, to refurbish that, that home. And then you're looking at building a, a tiny home. Uh, question for, I think, I really can't do that, we can't do that, it'll be a public hearing, but I'm just wondering if um, the people that have spoken against it would be okay now knowing that there are just three RVs in that location where that, where she has identified, and then a tiny home or a single-family resident. Anyway, I, I will shut up and listen to your comments, but I, that's where my brain's at.
David, do you have any comment? No, I'm trying to digest this, uh, and, and obviously, it's, she's wanting to put these, uh, three RVs in there, I guess, for a source of income to do what she needs to do, and, and it's actually gonna be a temporary, i- is, a- am I reading this right? It's gonna be a temporary situation where, uh, once you get that home uh, remodeled or whatever, and, and you have that tiny home, that there's another home that's gonna go on that property, and the RVs will be eliminated?
Would like to build my personal home right there, yes. I don't have a timeframe for that, I, I live alone with just my three kids, money is, but that is my plan eventually.
But just to clarify, you already have water, sufficient water there, and your septic system, or has already been there?
For the RVs is already there, there's a separate septic for the house, and my well is used to water. All those, it was thirty-six or more acres that were there, I have that well that did all that. So, the water is plenty there, and the septic's are, are done.
Richard, what's your thought?
Sure, yes.
Once something gets re-zoned for that area, can they do, like, if it's zoned for RVs or whatever, um, can they do whatever they want? I mean, they can, or is there a stipulation on the zoning? Or d- it doesn't say, yes, you're zoned for RVs, I mean, she's saying three, but that's an awful lot of land, will more be put in?
That might be an engineer's question. Chairman, that's, that's essentially the same thing we dealt with on the other two requests.
Yeah.
Is the board could formulate a stipulation that it is limited to three RV spaces and a tiny home in addition to the primary residence, and, and then that would limit it. Could you come back to the board later and ask for additional? Yes, that'd be a separate request, then we go beyond the stipulation.
Ask her, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
No, ask her if that answers her question.
Did, does that answer your question?
No, I didn't really catch it all, he said that, that she is allowed to put, I didn't
I'll, I'll restate it, so, the board has the authority to put a stipulation on the rezone. In other words, they could say it's re-zoned for RV use, but no more than three RVs and one tiny homes. That way, she couldn't come back in and put six, or ten, or twelve. She'd have to come back to the board, or the planning, zoning commission first, and ask for permission to put more on. If they put that stipulation on the rezone.
Okay, but she has been re-zoned, say she's been re-zoned now for that. Can I get re-zoned to have a RV put on my lot, I have an acre, say just one? My kids are coming out here from Pennsylvania, I mean, they're gonna live in the house with me, but can
Could you do the same thing?
Opens up a can of worms, that's all.
Yeah, we vote on them individually.
Yeah.
But there, but every situation is taken on a one-to-one basis, we vote on each, uh, if planning and zoning, you know, with their recommendation or their voting, i- it, it's, it's a separate, separate issue. I, I understand your concerns about it might open up a can of worms, but it's not that, that everyone's gonna be allowed to do what she is trying to do, that she's brought forth to us on every single acre that's out there, that somebody might own empty, empty land.
But if somebody wanted to, and if you deny it, would that not be discrimination?
No, not necessarily, it just depends on what has been brought forth to the board, and we analyze it and, and make a decision as we're here. How about you, Mr. Chairman? Well, this is a tough one. I, I, I hear that, that it's, it's all single homes out there. I can understand Mrs. Wallace wanting to do what she wants to do. Uh. To me, it's favorable that, that there is quite a bit of land and trees that will isolate her three units from, from the neighborhood. I, I think that's a plus, I think we limited, the three is a plus. And yet, I al- also understand your comment, are we opening up a can of worms where pretty soon, everybody's gonna be doing this? Because I see lots of single homes, and, I mean, homes, and, and then there's space. Well, uh, are we gonna dock those with, with, uh, with the same idea? And I also understand that the process of this process is that each one will be uh, handled individually, with their own set of criteria. The positives I see with this is, there is isolation. There is, uh, there is, uh, natural boundaries.
Barriers.
Barriers, yeah, barriers would be better word, of, of the trees. And, uh. Yes.
Looking at that property, at all those trees, where would those three trees be placed? Uh, how far from Corina's property?
Can you show?
Is it the city here?
Guys.
Where, where the hand is, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just.
Right there in that empty space with no trees.
You know how penetrative, right, an RV park?
So, there was already some there, um, but it was accessible, so we had to redo the septic.
So, do you just run electrical cords to it?
No, there'll be electrical.
So, that costs money to do all of that?
Well, that's my money, though.
Yeah, right, but, I mean, you're making money, I mean, it's second price, so.
You gotta give money to make money.
This discussion's beyond the
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Alright, we're not in public hearing, so it's, it's difficult to have back and forth discussions, no, and it's, it's all good information, and we wanna hear that, right? We gotta make a decision, though, we wanted to hear that in the public, you know, the public hearings, we talk back and forth, but, um. Okay.
Were you, were you done? I, I, I was done, yes, I, uh, anyway, do you have any other questions?
I don't.
David?
No, I stated my comments.
Ready to make a motion?
I, I moved that we re- we approve of the request by Brittany Wallace to change the zoning district of parcel three hundred dash five seven dash zero seven four A from RU thirty-six to MH eighteen. And that, with the stipulation of three maximum RVs and one site-built home.
Did you wanna include the tiny homes she requested, or not?
Well, a site-built would be a tiny home.
Site-built.
Okay, and one tiny home. Three RVs and one tiny home. It clears?
Mr. Chair. Yes, the quick concern is that the house looks there right now. The quick concern is that the house looks there right now. I think is a tiny home.
Oh.
Right, and that that might fit her in second between violation. I don't think that I would work so fast enough.
One site built and one tiny home?
And and another
in the location identified by the property order.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
And then you tell me if you're wrong, just tell me, be quiet. Um. A motion to approve a request by Brittany Wallace to change the zoning parcel three hundred dash fifty seven dash seven oh seven four A from RU thirty six rural minimum lot area thirty six acres to MH dash eighteen RV park minimum lot area eighteen hundred square foot. Subject to the stipulation that no more than three RV spots or or hookups. One tiny home and a site-built home be allowed on the lot with the rezone.
The existing site-built home.
Well, she's going to probably replace it, but there'd be one site-built home, yeah.
Okay.
Is that is that a fair stipulation?
I worry that that gives her the latitude to put five or three RVs in a tiny home that's like.
Okay, what do you suggest? That was that was, I think, restating her request. What is your recommendation?
Uh, three RV spaces and a additional residence. One additional.
Because the 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 home there already exists, right?
It occupied.
The tiny home is on a trailer, so it's movable. So if you just say four slots, can we just say four slots in the existing home?
I apologize to keep quibbling, but that means down the road that she could end up with four RV spaces.
But I already purchased a tiny home. I can take it off.
Tiny home is kind of like an RV.
I I don't, so I don't think there's a legal definition for tiny home.
It's RV.
I'm not using it, though. It's gonna stay.
All right. It's gonna stay on the trailer?
Yeah, I'll just take the wheels off.
Oh.
I can't take it off the trailer.
I see. That's built on the trailer.
Well, Mr. Chair, perhaps you could say we're maximum three RV spaces and four maximum occupied loans.
Well, because because that existing home, if you repurpose that, then nobody would be able to live in that existing home with that.
Right? So Mrs. Wallace, you have that house, a tiny home and three RVs.
Yeah, it plugs in too, so we can just call it four spots. That's why I said four instead of three. Just make it easy.
Was, yeah.
Okay, that's the cleanest way.
Yeah, four RV spots.
Plus the the existing.
Plus the existing home.
That would be the stipulation.
You want to go over it again?
With each attempt, it gets more precarious. A motion to approve a request by Brittany Wallace to change, as previously stated, parcel number three hundred dash fifty seven dash oh seven four A from RU thirty six rural minimum lot area thirty six acres to MH dash eighteen RV park minimum lot area eighteen hundred square feet. Subject to the stipulation that no more than four RV hookups be allowed and one main residence.
All right, so move to
I second that motion.
Here you have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, 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 motion passes. Thank you. We will now go to agenda item four.
Mr. Chairman, could we take a quick break?
Sure, let's take a five minute. Yeah, let's take a five.
Oh, um, actually, Mr. Griffin, please set his items so he can go down and attend court.
Yeah, so no, no break yet.
No break. So let's see what.
That's number eleven.
Eleven eleven. So we will, boy, we're just throwing this thing out. We will now go to agenda item eleven. And you owe us.
Thank you, Gary Griffith with the County Attorney's Office. Um, I am asking that the board approve the contract uh for a special deputy Greenlee County Attorney Services. It would be between the uh Graham County Attorney's Office and the
Graham Green.
Sorry, Greenlee County Attorney's Office and the Center for Rural Arizona Justice. Basically, the Center for Rural Arizona Justice is a nonprofit that does prosecution services. The two attorneys that are involved in this are Celeste Robertson and Garrett Karchner. They're both very good attorneys. I know them both. Um, and they're going to help us. Uh, as you recall, a couple of years ago, we had Ray Geiser on us on a contract uh and he prosecuted on a contract basis. And uh he was very helpful, but then he decided to become a defense attorney, a defense attorney instead of prosecutor. And so we've kept that budget uh item in the budget, and so it's still in the budget. This is budgeted for, and we finally found these people who are are uh willing to help us out and and help us with the prosecution services here in Greenlee County. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, here's the best contract checked out by our county attorney.
Yes.
Well, I so moved that we approved for con- for a contract for prosecution services between the Greenlee County Attorney and the Center for Rural Arizona Justice as presented.
I'll second that.
Your motion to second, is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye, motion passes. We will now, we will now take a then let's come back at uh five deal.
I know, nobody knew what I'm gonna do. Those that I know you have had once you said, well, I just want to hear the message. They saw.
That's one of the things that I actually got to assure. I get one of these, that I get those in the comments for what I'm doing, redo this order. Let's ask you additionally, would this have been a separate, separate, separate? A separate kind of story?
Yeah. I think that's all.
Okay, I worked with us last. I asked for those. I'll have that as well. Yes. Yeah, see, we might. Everybody's role is unofficially. Yeah, same thing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you both. I'll go there in my name. And I know what they didn't hope.
But I was, I I was all in, I was all in favor of this. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
Well, just briefly, I'm sure that in some of the comments you're talking about, there's many coordinates, so it seems they have most of the things we need. I'll stop it, I know. I have. I need to care, it's on me, I can read this.
Churros are gonna have to enjoy. All right, yes. I will buy.
What up, man?
Several.
Thanks, brother. Did it here? Now my phone's off. It's your lot.
A few, we had a lot of.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this Board of Supervisors meeting back to order, and we are on agenda item four. Uh, we have Bianca Casinera, election directors. And before we start, Bianca, thank you and the recorder's office. Uh, we didn't make the newspaper. Uh, everything went smooth. Uh, our ballots were counted in an accurate, timely manner. Thank you all involved for that. Uh, that is a big kudos. So, thank you.
I I echo that. I mean, it's just everything that everything that he said is is quite accurate. So thank you both. The both of your departments, it wasn't just you guys, it was a team. So thank you very, very much.
And I did all those comments. Had to sweat a little bit. You know, before we start, uh, there down in Yuma County, there was a supervisor that won by three
three.
Votes. They did a recount and they came out exactly the same. So it works. It works.
Tony Ray.
Tony Ray, yeah.
Uh, oh, Martine's telling me he looks ten years old. Okay, s- excuse me, go ahead, Bianca.
Thank you. So our twenty twenty four general election canvas. We just put a little slideshow together to explain a little bit more about the whole process. Um. So what is canvas and?
Hold on just a second, because our livestream not going. Like it says, preparing livestream. We are, we're live, okay, very good. Thank you. Okay.
Um, so what does it mean to canvas and what does a canvas of an election mean? Um, basically, just certifying um the results of an election. Um, election results are accepted and certified by a vote from our county board of supervisors. Um. It is not optional. Um, we have to certify this mandatory. And we have to do it by a deadline. Elections um in Arizona are all certified by their by their specific county local races and county offices, county ballot propositions are only certified by board of supervisor, by their board of supervisors. Federal races, state race, statewide races, um statewide ballot propositions are first certified by their county board of supervisors. And then um by the Secretary of State's office, they'll do their statewide canvas. Um, an election takes months. But for, it's a long process prior to the actual election date. It begins with candidates and or ballot propositions when they become eligible to be on a ballot. Um, and then it ends with counting ballots and then conducting that hand count audit. Um, the primary election is before the general election, and those candidates who win the primary cannot go on to the general election ballot until the primary has been certified. Um, counties do count votes, sorry, sorry, no, you're right. Um. So candidates who win, um, the general election cannot actually um take office until elections have been certified. Um, the ballot propositions also cannot take effect until those have been certified and electoral college electors can't vote for the President of the United States until they have those. electors can't vote for the President of the United States until they have those, um, elections have been certified. Um, counties, all counties vote different sets of ballots, a few ballots are, a few of those ballots, or several of those ballots are, um, one, early voting, those early ballots that are voted by those voters, um, early, it's, so the deadline for that is Friday before the election. Um, election day ballots. Those are the ballots that are cast on election day by our precincts and by our vote center locations. Um, and then the late early ballots are those that are received between the Friday before election up until election night, um, seven P M. Um, ballot verification, so those voters who cast their ballots, um, on election day to go to the polling places to cast their ballots, they must provide ID before receiving a ballot. Early voters, um, sign those affidavit envelopes, and those signatures are, um, verified by handwritten comparison experts to verify those signatures. So we have tabulated all our votes, all the votes received, um, from election night to those early ballots and those late early ballots, they've all been tabulated. We did have representatives from both parties, the Republican Party and the Democratic Party, um, who worked in a team of three that conducted the hand count of those randomly selected ballots, um, which was one was an early ballot batch, and then we did two of our five voting locations that were hand counted, um, to provide, to verify that the accuracy of the tabulations machine, the tabulation machines were accurate. We do have, so all our election results, all the vote totals include all the ballots cast, the precinct, um, report, the precincts that have been reported, and our voter turnout, they have been provided to you, um, in the canvas, and it's actually, all those results are on our website. Um, it's on our home screen, there's a banner on there, pretty, pretty easy to access that. Um, and we did go ahead and put, uh, just the totals of all the races for federal, statewide, and even our county, um, and the ballot propositions. We did, um, add up to these next few slides, and I'll just highlight a couple of them. Uh, for the president, Greeley County did vote Donald Trump. Um, US Senator Greeley County voted Carrie Lake. And the US Representative Greeley County voted Launceston money. Um, these ones, we'll just go ahead and keep them up if you guys wanna review them, um, if you have any questions, I can, I'd be more than happy to answer, but I don't think to go over every single one.
And all those were part of our packets.
Yes, so all, all of these are in your packets, um, we have our, our Board of Supervisors right there, our sheriff's race, reporters' race. And then these are the uncontested races in our county. And then the rest are all the ballot propositions, the thirteen that were on the ballot. And again, these are all on the election results, um, on our website and in your packet. And again, thank you, everyone, again, I'll, I'll echo Sherry, she did mention all her kudos to everybody, it takes a village, and we appreciate it, and the support we have from our Board of Supervisors, our county administrator, um, everybody who's involved. We appreciate everybody's help.
Mr. Chairman, um, in addition to expressing my own gratitude, there are things I worry about, there's things I don't, I don't have to worry about how elections are run because these two women and the people work with them. But one of the things that we continually try to do is to open up the process, make it transparent. Those things are in your packet, but we want people to see what the voting trends are, we invite them to come and help as a poll worker, a hand count auditor. There's so many areas where you can get in, and it's been our experience that even a small involvement in elections dissipates election denialism like nothing else. You sit down, you work across the table with a person from a different party you've never met, and within minutes, all of a sudden, you found a new friend of a different political party, and we need more of that in this country, not less. And so we, we put this together, not because you don't know it, but because it works, and it works really, really well in Greeley County. Uh, trends have changed over the last few decades of where candidates are, which candidates are winning and so forth. But for us, in the process, and I say us as a, as a second fiddle to these two women and their staff, the process is more important than the outcome. And I can tell you unequivocally that the process is run superbly here in Greeley County and across the state. And that needs to be said often in our society. It works. The slides.
There we are, we're gonna see your face down the road, you know, when other than that, are you gonna, are you gonna be in the picture?
You know.
After so many that you've gone through.
Yeah.
I enjoyed the election.
Well. Once again, I, as the, as the board, we express our great appreciation for what you and your staff do, and like I say, we didn't make the papers, everything went smooth. I have all the confidence in the world that the election results are accurate, and they were, they happened in a timely manner. Uh, so with that, unless you gentlemen have something, a motion would be in order.
Yep, having reviewed the results of the 2024 general election as presented by the Greeley County Elections Director, I move to accept and certify the results of the 2024 Greeley County General Election for Greeley County.
Nice second, that motion.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we will now go to Agenda Item Twelve.
We're gonna cover quite a bit of ground here, but we'll cover it fairly quickly. Um, what I wanted to visit with the board about today is process, and, and I'm not gonna update every single tier one project, some are, uh, the slow rate of progress is due to state agencies we interact with, but I'm gonna highlight three of the projects we've been working on, let you know where we've made progress and, and what we're doing to try and get these projects right. So I'm gonna start with Loma and the ball field. It, it gets quiet billing next to some of the, the lights and, and flash of the fairgrounds, but we've been making slow progress out there, and I wanna thank Supervisor Gomez because he's, he's helped us see the vision and, and make sure that vision gets executed. The field has been extended, the entire field's been leveled, and if you haven't been out there, I encourage you to go out there someday. It really is quite impressive. In addition to the optical illusion that it makes look like Pride Rock from Lion King, um, it's been leveled. Um, we identified some drainage issues, I visited with, uh, David Gomez this morning. Let's back up, David Manus this morning. Um, and we're waiting to put in the culver, that'll, that'll take the drainage off the field and out underneath the walking track and, and off the property. Um, I said the field's been oriented, uh, it was, we set up one way, um, strictly on, on the aspects of the sun. It's been reoriented a little bit to, to make it a little bit better for longer field, but also to avoid and miss the, the pump, the well that we've got there. I say drainage will be addressed next, the original backstop that was out there when we began to try and remove it was, was pretty brittle and it just came apart. Um, and so as we've, uh, removed the backstop from the second field in Duncan, that's been numbered like London Bridge when they brought it over from London to Lake Habletsuit. All the parts been numbered and labeled and color coded so that it can be reassembled, and we'll start on that process soon. That will go in first before the other fencing. Um, after that is done, then, then the, the plumbing for the sprinkler system will go in after that. Mr. Manu told me this morning as well that they are, they're constructing the stand pipe, because we use that well also for roads in the area, and, and then we'll just await the plumbing, the trench has been dug to the wells, and so it's, it's, it doesn't look like progress is moving quickly, but we're moving steadily on that process. Um, one of the other major projects is the, yes, please.
Question? The pavilion over the picnic tables.
We decided not to do it, no, we didn't. No, actually, it's.
Wouldn't surprise us.
Um, the pavilion over the picnic tables, I understand, was actually a little bit ahead of schedule, and they should start constructing that, December is the last, I've been told.
Okay.
So the materials are, are in or they're on their way, and that should go up soon. So, and, and as we've seen with this group, it puts them up, once the materials run site, man, it goes up fast. So, um, thanks for asking about that. Uh, the public roads building, engineering building, roads building, um, we've, uh, Reed has, has put together a preliminary, um, layout. Um, it's been circulated among the users, um, Tony and, and David have been heavily involved in that. Some of the rooms will probably be reassigned, and, and there may be some slight changes, but the basic layout is laid out, there'll be a, a roll call room, uh, lineup room where they can, they can line up and get lined out on their jobs during the day. There'll be a public entrance, we don't, we want to discourage people coming in through the back of the building, so which would be through the yard, and so the location we're looking at right now, if you've been out there, um, many, many years ago, after my construction, essentially a truck waiting area, uh, this would be out in that area, so that the public will come into the front entrance, there'll be a, a, a nice welcoming area there where, um, our administrative staff can greet people and get them to the right office. It'll also help those who are working there work more effectively, um, so they can buckle down, there'll be a place, for example, for Reed's Maps, for road maps, and so forth. Um, but that, that is, the basic site plan's been reviewed, and the building layout's been reviewed. We intend to go out to have that constructed, um, simply so we don't pull our own personnel off for projects and other projects we have working on.
In metal, is that what that?
Yes, yes, it'd be a metal shell with, um, with a, um, two before stud framing inside, the top of the building will, will have, uh, space for storage, so above, above the office space.
As I mean, that's great.
Thanks. It, it really is, and when you think about what all goes on there in these three areas that, that work hand and glove all the time, that'd be an excellent workspace. Um, and, and I can't just walk upstairs and bug everybody, right? So. Let's move on to the Fairgrounds Park redesign, um. I first want to acknowledge who is on our internal team, not just to thank them, but because, because what we've tried to do is construct a team inside that is diverse in the way we approach problems, diverse in the assignments that are given, so that as we go through ideas, we're not just throwing something against the wall and say, let's go with it. So we've got myself and, and Austin, we see it from an administrative point of view. Uh, Christian Taylor has, has been sort of our, our money person. Uh, she's applied for grants, she's the ones that identified grants that we can continue to go after. Uh, we've already landed a $200,000 United Way grant that will help in the project. Um. And then she just sees things that the rest of us don't, when we get out, we get to talking about something, she'll point something out that we hadn't thought of. Uh, then we've got David Manus in our roads, uh, group, Tony, and then, uh, Tony Heinz, Public Works, and then Reed Larson. And that's our internal working group, and we meet, um, once a week, sometimes we do it by email exchange, but we're meeting regularly to try and go over what people have learned, what we're learning from the community and so forth. I think this is important information about what we've done, so we, we've faced some headwinds in the public, and, and some of it's simply because they're not aware of what ground has been covered, and, and that's, that's on me. There's a point at which in any project where you develop it, and then there's a point at which you shop it out to the community, and we were probably a little behind that, that switch over. We've tried to make up with it. We've been working with a lot of different people, consult with experts in their field, uh, we brought in a consultant to talk to our internal group about landscaping issues, um, that things we should consider as we design a water, uh, watering system for the fields. It's also been suggested watering system for the rodeo arena, so we're not taking a water truck out there. Um, also, uh, he's given us a preliminary assessment of how much water will be needed for the things that we've sketched out, um, and we are in the process of trying to meet that water demand, and we're looking at all different options available to us. Um, but, but that will probably be a, a multi, uh, planned solution. And he's even suggested the kinds of grass we should, we should be looking at, the types of vegetation, what trees work, what trees don't work as well, uh, which are subject to disease, which are, are gonna give you some, some through the leaves that your grass will grow, those kinds of things, which we would probably guess, but he does it, you know, for a living, and so that's been tremendously helpful. We've worked with D V E C, um, right now, there's a line of electric poles that runs right down the east side of, of the road that goes through the fairgrounds. And that's where our power feeds from the south to the north and everything else. So we will end up developing a two-pronged approach to our electric needs, one would, would enter the property from the north, near our current, um, near our current, um, you know, Public Works garage area. Uh, the other would enter from the south, right where we have it, but we will work a combination of underground and other hookups so that we're not dealing with poles in the way of other development. We've also visited with A D O R, uh, A D O R. That's not right.
The A D.
A D O T. Good, I'm glad the R and T are close to each other on the keyboard, because that explains maybe, but no, A D O T, A Don. Uh, talk about relocating our, our Highway Seventy Five entrance. Uh, we would like to keep the entrance that is there now, but use it solely for Public Works and Roads, um, purposes. The entrance to the fairgrounds itself would come off of Seventy Five directly across from, um, Chaparral, which goes out to the Duncan Elementary School. That's a process, um. They, they, they want things like traffic studies and how we're gonna set up our safety plan and that kind of stuff. Unfortunately, we have a road engineer who knows how to interact with them, it doesn't make less frustrating, but at least we can navigate the waters there. Um, we've talked to several people about rodeo arena layouts, usage, what to do right, what to do wrong. Internally, we, we've set a, a standard that we don't wanna do something stupid, we don't wanna do something that is not going to work. Either the users don't like it, or the spectators can't see it, or we create increased liability and so forth, and so in that quest, we've already sat down with, um, in fact, last week when I was in Phoenix, I drove down to Coolidge and met with the, um, Central Arizona College Rodeo Coach, who's also the director of the South of the Grand Canyon Circuit, Regional Circuit of the National Intercollegiate Rodeo Association. He himself is a collegiate roper, he's roped all over the country, and as an extra bonus while we're there, his father showed up, and he is a five-time national rodeo finalist qualifier. And so they had lots of great suggestions about what you do and what you don't do with an arena. Um, some of the ideas that we were planning towards, they, they gave some very careful and kindly worded critiques, say that would cause a problem if you do that. Um, but it was, it was really, he's, he's open, I've got his number, he says, call me anytime, um, and we can work through some of those things. Like I say, having been to so many arenas, they see what works and what doesn't work. Um, we've also worked with the team roping promoter and got his ideas and solutions. He's a, a person who's come over already and put on two or three team roping events, uh, and, and we're getting more interest of other people who have put on those events. Um, we talked to, uh, the group that constructed our pins at the north end of the arena, and he's got some ideas on, on how best to construct. One question, for example, we talked about, uh, with the coach at, at C A C was, do you build these things with panels so they're movable and you can adapt them, he says, I would not do that. He says, you run too many problems, you bend panels, you have broncs or holes running into, he said, if you've got pipe, you can weld up, weld up your pipe. It was a good, good insight. Um, and then, like I say, we, we've looked for obvious errors, the, the fellow who qualified for the national finals was telling me about an arena somewhere in New Mexico where they thought it was a really good idea to put their bar right next to where the barrel racers run out of the arena. And so he was there one night, and this gal had her two beers, which were probably three, four, five, or six, whatever they were, and she just wanders right across that opening. And she just wanders right across that opening and a and a barrel racing horse came in. The the rider pulled up on the horse, so the horse couldn't see below and just hit that gal head on. He said, I don't know how she survived. But that would be one of those stupid things we don't want to do. So um it's really helpful to talk to people who've been around and seen these things. One of the other things we've done is we went down to meet with Graham County in town of Thatcher. Reed set that up for us. Um, it was fascinating. Uh, one thing both of them mentioned right away, both of them, um. Graham County drilled a well or had a well they intended to water all their fields with. And it was so salty, it wouldn't work. And so they they put in an expensive uh R O plant. Didn't clean it up enough and they completely abandoned that. They also take otherwise good water, put it into a pond, feed some fish. Drop them into a second pond where it grows lots of green stuff and flogs their pipes and and valves and stuff. So they both suggested, in county Thatcher's experience, they put a new field up there, kind of by their baseball fields, but over a little rise. And the more they watered, the faster their grass was dying. They were working out of a well that again was so salty that it was killing them. And then the mist would go up and they. It was beginning to kill trees on the side of the the field because of the the drift. And and so both places said, test your water, test your water. So we are underway to test. Whatever water we are able to develop so that and and then if we need to treat it, so that we don't run into that problem. It was really quite fascinating that. Thatcher says, you know, we started watering at night and we and we, the more we watered, the dead of the grass later. We also said, what worked well with their designs? And and that was down sort of a grander level. Where do you put your valves? Um, they talked about their splash pad in Thatcher. And the kinds of vegetation they would use and what they would not use. Some stuff just sheds like crazy. That the fellow says, don't put any mosquitoes around here, anywhere close to your. Your uh splash pad. And they've got a drainage with a a essentially a big garbage disposal. But they've also got the ability to switch with a a remote control, whether that water goes back into recirculate and be treated. Or whether it goes into their their uh sewage system. Some just very practical, like they suggested, for example, if you could. You give enough more, he says, get a a pushmore rather than a ride more, which seems kind of counterintuitive, but you can maneuver it better. Um, so lots of things that that we would not have thought of on our own. Um, testing soils, we've already started some of that. We've sent some soil uh samples out. We'll do some more testing of the soil. Um, one of the big questions is, would our soil support grass? Or do we need to bring in soil down there? And we we we've answered that, that'll support it, but we may need to supplement it before we start planting. And then we talked about how their facilities are managed. Um, the Graham County Fairgrounds, for example, all of the pavilions, you can reserve it. And if they do, they go out and put a sign, reserved by the Rapier family. And they they charge fifteen dollars or something like that, but they say they they don't have fights over it. Now, if it's not reserved, it's first come for served. Thatcher, on the other hand, does not reserve the their little picnic pavilions and they have swaddles all the time. It was just one of those little tricks of the trade that probably would not have occurred to us. Um, we also got gathered some paperwork from Graham County about how they manage their different facilities. Um, and that what are managers are most popular and how how they work. Um, tremendously insightful. We've also, um, I think this goes on to the next page. We've done some community outreach. Um, after we we got a lot of discussion on Facebook. Austin and I reached out to each one of the these groups, a representative of the the Junior Life Doc Four H Rodeo Series Little League. Uh, the F F A rep, um, and we've visited with everyone on, sit down face to face. Like with the F F A rep, I've visited with her a little bit face to face and two or three times over the phone. So that we can understand what their needs were. The parking issue that was concerned, we have designed around that. There will not be a parking issue. Anymore with the junior livestock area. Um, but we've learned what what's important to them, what what makes their event work well. Um, and so that that's been tremendously helpful. I know I've gone out and talked to a few people. I know Richard's talked to some people who've reached out. With concerns and we've sat down with them face to face. Um, point out what we're trying to do, how we're trying to make sure we get this right. And and I think it has been very effective as people hear the ideas and see what we're trying to, how we're trying to solve it. Um, it's it's getting much better. The other is we held a community meeting. Um, to explain our process. And and what we did in the meeting, we we took a a very active and involved approach. As people came in, we had three sets of maps. On tables, Supervisor Gomez and Lunt were both there, but we laid out the maps and said, here's some markers, draw on them. Tell us what you think will work, what won't work, and turn it over right down on the back. I see a problem here. Here's a proposed solution. And we've ended up, I think, our, I was not there last week, but our group has gone over that and we're going to digest what they've come up with. Again, we don't want to do something that's just obviously wrong. I will tell you that for pretty much every opinion we find. There's another counter opinion that thinks just the opposite. Even back to our favorite topic, arena dirt. How deep it should be, how often it should be groomed, how wet it should be. And 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 I don't knock that because these are people who feel passionate about what they're involved with. And in many cases, they're spending lots and lots of money to buy a horse or buy livestock. Or to invest in in time at the ball fields, whatever it is. But but that meeting I thought, think was very, very uh helpful. It's not the last meeting we will have. Um, and I was very careful with misses for things that we are not ready to promise yet. Um, we'll have another meeting. I'd say we, I've gotten a couple of folks uh call me and and have some ideas and insights where we should go for stuff. But this process, while arduous, has been tremendously helpful. There are some things that that probably in a million years would not have occurred to our internal committee. And yet people who do this all the time say, do this, don't do that. So that's what I wanted to cover on our C I P projects. I can see we have some other ones going. But these are the ones where we're we're making some headway and happy to stand for any questions.
No questions. I greatly appreciate the process and getting all the feedback. That's uh. Want to do it right the first time, so. So that's great. And there there's several opinions that I know that even on the dirt. The arena dirt, because team ropers might like one type, the barrel racers want a different type, cutting horses might want a different type. So. I mean, I get that. So there has to be kind of a all-terrain. So hopefully we can make it all happen. But I I think, did you get some good feedback on the layout of the arenas, you know?
Orientation.
Yeah, orientation, the side by side, back to back.
Um, we did, and and we're still working through that. I mean, there's there's value in in having run parallel. North and south, there's value in having run parallel side, you know, east and west.
Yeah.
Away from the grandstands. And there's value in having the secondary arena separated, not run parallel. Um, some of the insights were gained by the college rodeo. Um, there was concerns expressed about the sun. You know, as a barrel rider or team roper ropes into the sun. As I talked with coaching in C A C, he also pointed out that if you're on your field or your arena's north, south. The lasers that they use to do timing get interrupted by the sun. He says, so lay it out east to west. No, lay it out this direction. So uh it's going to be one of those that probably no matter what the final layout we come to you with. There'll be champions and there'll be folks who wish we'd done it a different way. But but we, like I say, we're we're not just limiting our experience to here. We're and we're not done reaching out to people who know more about it than we do. But that's that's all I have on that topic unless you have questions.
No, I I appreciate all the effort that's going in there. Uh, I I know there's been lots of visits and I think those visits have been uh. They've, they've helped a lot of the concerns because we came to them individually and said, all right. Tell us. And and once we left, uh, we we left with an advocate instead of someone that was out throwing stones. So I think that really helped. Okay, uh. If not, continue.
All right, I will go to topic B and that's the Enterprise fleet. Let me, let me give you a little background by way of reminder. Um. Initially, when this was presented, we were in the pandemic and we were, we were particularly struggling to find police vehicles. We we were having trouble finding any vehicles. We found a couple, but we couldn't find police vehicles in in the first place. And so. Because we needed, because we needed to rotate some some vehicles out, we purchased five uh police vehicles through this contract. We ended up buying four or five other um what we call white fleet, non, non-emergency fleet. And so they're on that. And and part of the idea was to say, hey, let's see how this works out and what would, what would this look like in five years? Um. Where I struggled is as we got down and and Enterprise approached me a couple of months ago and said, are you, you want more of these? And I said, I I went down and broke it down, uh Renee and I broke it down. And we realized that between fees and the built-in interest rate, we are paying about twelve percent on these things. It's above market, it's expensive. And and frankly, my my response to the Enterprise guy was. There's no way we can afford that, especially since we have always budgeted to buy these things outright. Um, and so we're paying essentially a twelve percent premium. And and I I told him, we did this because we couldn't get them. He says, can I show you how you could save that twelve percent? And I was interested. So sat down with him for for breakfast, um. And he started talking to me and I I'm gonna. This is big. I'm gonna try and make sure we can see it all. Um, but he started talking to me and as he, as he did, I realized. That what he was describing is the very same model that we have with Empire Caterpillar. We buy, I'm gonna just throw numbers up. We buy a million dollar road grader, use it for seven years. And it's resold. And because the way we use our equipment and maintain it is in such good shape. We, the next one costs us only about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Those are, those are very large numbers. I mean, but but the idea is we're getting so much back in trade-in value. That our next one doesn't cost us very much. And we have people, we've actually had people contact during the county, uh, I understand you're getting to that greater, so you're going to get rid of it now. I want to buy it. It's 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 that 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 well off. We can, there were two factors that I was not aware of and and perhaps they were communicated, but I didn't. In in the way that this was presented initially, they missed me. The first was, is that we can buy the car outright. If if we go through Enterprise, it's a lease, so we keep about a dollar uh or some value on the lease. But we would pay that cost. So there's no interest. There's no lease payments, if you will. There is a fee involved and I'll I'll show you where that shows up. And that's for them to manage the entire process. That includes locating the vehicles, disposing of the vehicles. And um essentially helping us know when to trade in a vehicle. The other is, is that I I assumed that it was a five-year process and it doesn't have to be. We have taken the model with our cars that we essentially maintain them well. And then Tony closely tracks our costs on each of these vehicles. And so as that maintenance begins to trail up. Um, we we move that car out of our fleet. It it works very well and in some cases it's helped us identify where we've been bitten. Let me give you an example. We bought, I think, four or five Tahos several years ago for police fleet. That that model year, all the transmissions have gone bad. And they they go bad. Later in the vehicle life, but it's not so late that we just get rid of the vehicle. It's still cheaper for us to replace a transmission than it is to replace the the car. And so, and it just happened to be that model year and and they showed up. So as as uh our representative from Enterprise began to talk to us and we started talking about how do we develop this model so that it makes sense. He actually suggested a two to three year cycle. And this is a, an example based on the current cost of a twenty-five hundred um. Um, you know, three quarter ten uh pickup that would be used in our, in our road department or our public works. Um, on a two-year cycle, the initial cost would be about five, fifty-one hundred or fifty-one thousand dollars, you know, fifty and change. He's anticipating and they try to take a very low conservative uh trade-in value, but after two years, if you turn that vehicle in. We would get forty thousand dollars back. And I asked him, I says, I want every cost that you're anticipating included in this model. This isn't a full analysis, but I want to make sure that I don't go run down this trail if the board's not comfortable with it. Um, the total depreciation, which is the fifty thousand. Minus the forty thousand. So essentially we'd lose ten thousand eight hundred and nine dollars in two years. That's the depreciation value of the car. We'd be paying taxes because we're in Arizona, we pay taxes on our cars too. That's the thirty-eight hundred dollars. Um, and this is an estimated cost. This is primarily oil changes and regular scheduled maintenance. Uh, it would be roughly uh four hundred eighty dollars, eighty dollars a month. Um. On such a short cycle, we are probably not replacing transmissions, E C Ns, uh, those kinds of things. Um.
Can can I, can you do the math there?
Yeah, I I.
Dollars a month and it's only four eighty. I mean. But it's two years.
It's, it actually be nineteen hundred and twenty. Eighty, eighty dollars a month times twenty-four months is nineteen hundred and eighty.
Right.
See if I got that.
Do us, I know it was close, I'm not saying that I knew it was nineteen eighty.
Well, and 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 I tell you, we've not done the deep dive on the analysis. Um, but you're right, you you're good. And and I wouldn't feel comfortable if you didn't catch me in a mistake. Supervisor Campbell. Fuel costs, this is, this is estimating at nineteen miles per gallon, three fifty a gallon would run us about fifty-five hundred during that two-year period to running. Now, for our non-police vehicles, for our our white fleet. We put twelve, fifteen thousand miles on a year. For many of them, we put a lot less than that on. And so, um, my vehicle, uh Supervisor Lunt's vehicle, it's going to Phoenix all the time, we're putting more miles on those. But for our, you know, run around the county type stuff, they're not, they're not heavily used in terms of mileage. Um, there's the management fee and over a two-year period, that'd be twelve hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, the downtime is questionable. The shorter you go, the less likely you're going to have downtime. Now, obviously, we crash something if we, you know, if there's some sort of recall that, you know, that comes out a year after we buy it. That's some downtime. But the shorter the period we own the vehicle, the less likely we have downtime and we're not trying to plug for other uses. When you, when you buy a, when you lease a vehicle. It's not a sales tax per se. You pay a use tax. So he's got it there taxed thirty-eight sixty-one. But because you don't pay the entire sales tax, at the end of the lease. You get the use tax credit back. And that goes to Enterprise. They pass it straight on to us. So essentially, part of our sales tax would come back to us. It's called different. It's called a use tax. But that's that red number in the uh, you know, right here. That would be the credit back. Essentially then, our total um. Our total two-year cost to own this, to have this vehicle on our fleet would be just shy of nineteen thousand dollars. We roll that back up and we purchase the next vehicle, which is probably by this point fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand. But we'll have the trade-in value. Which would be fifty thousand minus twenty thousand. So, you know, you'd have that trade-in value go against the next vehicle. Just like we do in our Empire Cat. The next one, and I will provide this to every, it's in your packet, but the next one is a five-year cycle. And you'll see that the cost over five years begins to approximate the cost of purchase. So our our turn back is less, our other costs go up. Uh, we get less use tax back and so forth. Um, this is, this is Enterprise's uh look at our current model. Essentially. He looked at our fleet, we supplied this to them, uh, and we kept that lasting mystery there. And I don't think I can. I don't know that I can uh.
Double click that line between.
Okay. So essentially, our ten-year total cost uh almost doubles. And what you capture in that, that ten-year ownership is a lot more maintenance. Uh, your gas mileage will will start to go down over time. And so essentially, we're paying for the ability to use that vehicle up till there's nothing left. When we take our vehicles to auction, there's not much left. Um, that's a credit to our maintenance program. That's a credit to our uh, our pub works where we track all of this. But essentially, we're using up all of the value ourselves. Um, instead of selling that extra value earlier in the cycle. Um. If if money were never an object, the easy way to do this would be to take, say, a third of your fleet. Replace it a third next year, a third next year and keep that rotation going. There are things that the used vehicle market is more volatile than the heavy equipment market is. Um, in as much as that values can change quite a bit. My son and his, his wife purchased a little old, and I say old, Toyota Tacoma for four, five thousand dollars. Three years later, they're in a crash, it got totaled, they were given thirteen thousand dollars for it. That doesn't happen all the time. Three years later, they're in a crash, it got totaled, they were given thirteen thousand dollars for it. That doesn't happen all the time. But, and, and it also, and I visit with this, with our rep, I says, I think if this is the program that we wanna look at and. And evaluate, car selection matters. He, he pointed out that. Dodge Chrysler, um, Solaris, whatever that, that Italian group is, are giving just all kinds of incentives to get. Get cars out of there. Well, there's a reason for that. And you look at resale value in two or three years. And whether you're a Dodge person or not, the resale value is, it just drops off. Um, compare that to the gold standards for resale, your Hondas, your Toyotas, your Lexus. Which I'm not suggesting I'll go get Lexus, but your resale value holds really, really well. So. So, vehicle selection would be important to make this program work. I, for example, don't know that if you bottom a Hendra road grader, you'd get the same turning value that you get with a Caterpillar. And so, why I'm presenting this to you is. I think it, before we make a decision, there's also some local consideration. Enterprise tries to work through local dealers to distribute these cars to, to their clients. Uh, and they get a fee for that. Kipton has not been interested. And, and I understand why. They would be trading a fee from enterprise for the sale of a car. And, and so. There is that local flavor, that, that local consideration. I think to make a, a decision, we need to do some very extensive analysis of our maintenance. Tony's got the numbers and he runs this stuff, he stays on top of it. But like I say, if we buy four police cars. And we have to replace all the transmissions at, say, seventy-five thousand miles, we would avoid that if, if we only owned it shorter. Now, one caveat, we got to looking at this because of police vehicle. There's a trouble, this model doesn't work with police vehicles. And here's why. You can't get rid of them. Um, if we turn them back to enterprise to resell for us. We strip everything off from strikes to lights to computer mounts, everything comes out and we give them back the, the vehicle like it came from the factory. By that point, you've got a lot of miles, they're hard miles, and, and they're just not much resale value. They are suggesting to their clients who do police package vehicles, that they find a smaller agency and that they sell down to them. The other thing is that you can't get your upfitting cost back, which as we know are just outlandish. And so, there, there's two ways of thinking about police package or emergency response vehicle. One is that that's, that's simply an unfortunate cost of doing business. And we try to find ways that we can minimize the impact. Two is we find a trading partner. So in other words, we would say ABC Security Company who has, you know, um, security op, you know, security hire. All around the valley, we will sell you our trucks after three years, five years, whatever it is. And try and recoup some of that cost and, and we form a long-term relationship with them. That's simply speculation. I think the better, if, if to make this decision going into it, the better analysis is. We're gonna simply pay for police cars and when they're done, there's just not much value in them. And that's a sunk cost. But for the rest of our white fleet, I think this is something that, that could make sense. How you weigh the value of local service, the value of, of those relationships. The value of, of, you know, ups and downs in the market year to year, that's something that, um. You know, we could do a sense of same, we could go out to bed and buy all these cars ourselves and then sell them ourselves and do the same thing. Enterprise is a national corporation, they, when they put in orders, they're ordering ten thousand Chevy Blazers. Uh, as opposed to one or two, so they get some price breaks. Um, but those kind of things. If this is not something that you want to pursue more, like I said, there were some things about this arrangement. That were never clear to me until, you know, I sat down and they said, here's some ways, because honestly, at twelve percent interest, why would we do it? There's no reason to do it. If we can cut that out and, and get this resale type thing going, then it may make some sense. If you'd rather not go this direction, I'm happy to do that and, and I'll simply let enterprise know we're gonna go with the way we've been doing it. If you'd like further analysis, I'm happy to do that too, because I think it can really give you a good answer, we need to dive deeper into our own numbers.
On the management fee, Derek.
Yes.
I- i- is that per transaction or, or is that, uh?
That's per vehicle.
Per vehicle and that's one charge. And well, it's charged monthly. You go over certain mile lengths, they're, they're gonna charge you more or this, that and the other because lease agreements. You gotta look at the, the uh, fine print.
And that's one of those details we wanna clarify, these are fleet leases as opposed to, um, as opposed to personal leases. And so there's, they do deal with some of that differently. Um, even the resale value is treated differently. So you, if you buy a, a car off a used car lot that was leased to an individual, you'll find that price is lower than if it was a fleet lease. And so, uh, or a corporate lease with a column. Um, but those are the details that we've been looking at. It's per vehicle and it's, it's calculated over the life of that vehicle. I say, most of our vehicles are fairly light use. Um, and so. You know, in terms of mileage, at two years, we'd be turning them in with probably twenty-five to fifty thousand miles tops, probably less, most of them. So, if you'd like us to do the deeper dive, and this won't be a overnight thing, but we'll be glad to do the, the analysis of that and, and come back. If you'd like to stick with the model we've got, it has worked for us and, and do that.
Well, I, I think, I think for lease vehicles, because I think during this whole, you know, this, this presentation, I, I was thinking about how. Law enforcement vehicles, you know, might not fit into this model. And, and I think leaving it out of this model. Is probably the right thing to do. So we can't have a hybrid thing, we treat law enforcement vehicles one way. Purchase them because of the large outfit costs, et cetera. And we kind of figure out a client what to do with them after they reach their, their. Violence, right now, it's, they go to auction, right? I mean.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. And, and there's just not much value.
Yeah, I agree. And so.
You can't even remount the lights necessarily on the next car.
Right, right. So I think, I think for white vehicles that you're, you're mentioning, which are standard fleet. Uh, that aren't law enforcement, I, I think I'd like to see a little more.
Deep analysis?
Yeah, to see what those real true costs are, especially based on, based on mileage, based on exceeding that mileage. You know, on an annual basis, something like that. I, I've leased one vehicle in my life and, and I went over the miles.
And you learned the hard.
That's why I got it once.
And it's easy to do that. We're, we're a long way from anywhere. Is that, is that consensus of the board to look at this?
I would, I would have to get those comments, uh. Because as you were presenting this, that's what was coming through my head was, you know, the local connection that we have, you know, I know that. That we do look at everything that, that goes out, you know, that. We haven't always bought, bought from local, but there is a, a good relationship that we have there that. You know, that we take advantage of. So that was going through my head, but I agree, I think if, if you go deep in a little bit deeper and. Might be something that we might wanna consider.
Let me share one other thing.
But no, local, it takes you four months to get an engine, so. Sorry, that's a little personal, but.
But, but let me, let me share with you another thought, um, because one of the things I asked of them was, um. Let's go here.
And separate.
I said, I wanna visit with people who've done this. I wanna see if this is working. And they put me in touch with San Marcos tribe, they didn't get back to me. Surprise, surprise. And, and then, uh, and then also Graham County Electric Co-op. And they got into this about same time, same time we did, for different reasons. Their, their motivations for getting into it were different than ours. Um, but they have not gone through a cycle yet to see what the resale value is. And so I asked them to, to send me some other, other, uh, places. Uh, they, they put me in touch with the city of San Marcos, they give me a contact person, I will call them. I think they've been into it and their, their, our fleet size is about the same as ours, San Marcos, California. And, and what I want to ask of them is, is this working? This is included in your packet, but is, is this resale model working? And it's one thing to have new vehicles, but you know, if, if we're doing primarily oil changes, maybe we do our own outfit. Because we've got more mechanic time. Um, you know, and I don't know those answers. But, but I will, I will seek out other contacts and, and talk to them and say, how is this working? Where are the problems? What's, what's working, what's not? Similar to what we're doing in our fairgrounds project. Um, I don't wanna cut our teeth. Now, I'm gonna rephrase what you both said about local. There, the standard for purchasing is the lowest and best. And there is value in having a, an ongoing relationship. We had an ambulance, for example, that was in a, in an accident. They were able to get it in and get it repaired as, as soon as they could get, you know, as, as Wells doesn't need any new wiring harness. Was it overnight? No. Was it quicker than hauling it down and cheaper than hauling it down to Phoenix or Houston? It was. And so those are the things that, that enter into that lowest and best analysis. Thank you. I will do, we'll get some more information, do some more analysis on this one. The next one. Put up here. Of all these. Again, this is for you to contemplate and give some thought to, but, um. Document. Ever so often. I think about what Richard does and I get sad. Because he's a lot of places, he does a lot of things, builds a lot of holes. And, and these are just the ones that we have as, as official board assignments. They don't include some of the work he's done at, at, uh, you know, on, on, uh. WIR and, and other things. But the current assignments we have, and I, I put down each of your NACO assignments. Really realizing that we don't make those assignments, those are applications that each board member makes to be included. And if I've got your committee wrong, I apologize. Um, but essentially, the, the core of our assignments are board chairman, vice chairman. Um, and then there's the County Superior Association Legislative Policy Committee. They meet once a week during the legislative session, it's done telephonically. They, CSA does a fantastic job of feeding us the information necessary to make decisions. But it does take some time and it takes some study. Um, and then there's Eastern Counties Organization. That is an organization that does so many things that we would struggle to do our, on our own. But it does take a, a level of involvement. Um, and the, the topics are such, they don't go away quickly. They, they require being up on latest developments which may occur every week or every month or every year. Cego is likewise a, a bit of a time consumption. Um, Supervisor Goma's been essentially the acting chair. And that takes more effort. Um, if, if someone, if we were to switch that around. Then it would probably take more attendance, but less organizational effort. And of course Supervisor Campbell, I see the Mexican Wolf, uh, emails come through as well, he attends those meetings on our behalf. And then maybe a few others. I'm not asking for a decision today. I'm asking for you who will be here in January to think about how we may reshuffle that. Um. All of you have some legislative experience. But we haven't always had the time to be there as, as frequently as Richard has been. And so we'll need to, to plug some holes. On the meeting dates, um. I visited briefly with, uh, Supervisor Lex William Wern. And as many of you have experienced, as we went out and talking to people and campaigning. There were people who said something to the effect of, why don't you hold your meetings at night so people can attend? There, there are, what I put up here is our current, um, basic meetings plan rule, if you will. Or, or how we schedule those. Experience over the years has shown a couple of things. If you have, if you had this topic, for example, we dealt with today. You could hold it at two in the morning at the fairgrounds and people are gonna show up, they care. For our run of the mill meeting, um, average meeting, the characters you see in the room. Except Erv wouldn't stick around, Reed wouldn't stick around, but the people closest to the tables are the people that are gonna be here for most of our meetings. Um, we may wish, for example, however, to shift from eight o'clock in the morning to, say, four o'clock in the, in the evening. One of the ideas that is circulating, and we will present this to you in December, is, uh, two of our offices have already moved to a four day week. Um, the law changed a couple of years ago, so the elected officials can determine how many days we, and which days they'll be open. There are rules how you go to four days, but they can make that decision. That, that fever has caught hold and we will come into you in December with a proposition. To move to a four day, four-ten work week. Will account for holidays and so forth. But if we did that, say a seven in the morning to five o'clock at night type of a schedule. Um, then holding a board meeting at four o'clock, three-thirty, it still puts it at one end of the day or the other. But we could accommodate some of those requests, uh, to make it when we're off work. Again, it's like a rodeo weekend, no matter what you do, some will be happy, some will not be happy and most won't, no. They'll, they'll, they're just not gonna show up. Again, I wanna put this in, in front of you so that you have time to think about it. Do we wanna try a different model? It's always helpful for us if we move to a afternoon meeting. It, it's helpful for staff, we do a lot of work on Friday so we can get these things posted on time, we've got extra time. We don't wanna run into a problem where we're not posting correctly or timely. And we have on occasion gone in on Saturday and fixed up, up posting so that we can meet the deadline. But if we look at a different schedule. Um, staff would, we would reorient so that we can make sure that we're ready and ready to, to talk. On, on afternoon or whatever. So I simply wanna plant that in your mind, I don't have any requests, I don't have any recommendation. Simply be thinking about it. That I think about having a stable board, because we're not dealing with this every four years.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm addressing Mr., Mr. Campbell over here. And now with Will Wern also being two full time, uh, job that they have. How, how, afternoon, give me your feeling on an afternoon meeting.
I, I, it only it's on one end of the spectrum or the other, right? I mean, in my opinion, it's either.
But I'm talking about early afternoon, I'm not talking about four o'clock.
Oh, well, like three.
Three at the latest.
The earliest.
I mean, the earliest. The earliest?
I, I think, yeah. I think that would be my, my thought. I mean, that would work. I mean, so I mean, I have to miss time regardless, so.
Yeah.
And my, my only thing has been, I would like to either start out the day doing one job. Or end the day doing one job, you know what I mean? So, and not having to go back and forth like in the middle of the day. That's, that's too hard on this dog and, and it's getting older, so.
Personally, I, I'm good with eight o'clock. I, I don't know.
I'd like to hear from the staff, you know.
Some of you guys do.
Yeah, you guys.
Can I make a suggestion? I, I mean, you can certainly do it now, but, but I, I'm gonna put the assignment on each of my staff to reach out to you.
Yeah.
And say, here's, here's why this would be a, a challenge or why it would be helpful. Um. You know, Bianca and I spend a lot of time, I'm, and usually it's my fault, but late on Friday, making sure the agenda is correct. And we still make mistakes like A V O R. Um, but. You have no idea how many mistakes we get. We spend a lot of time trying to do that. And so. Um, and her pressures, particularly during election season, are different than they are otherwise. But, but if you would allow us, I'm, I'm gonna put the assignment on the shoulders of all of us and including Reed. To sit down and reach out to you and say, here's what I think is an advantage or disadvantage. So we could certainly talk about it again in December, but that way we're not taking a lot of time here. And they may have different thoughts. If Bianca sees the problem differently than I do, I want her out of the freedom to say so to you.
Well, one last comment, I've had that conversation with Bianca and I've told her. Why, why do you guys do this on Friday towards the end, all the way till the end of the day on a Friday? Why don't you move it back one day and, and do what you're doing on Friday or Thursday? Even though we have our meeting on the first and third Tuesday of the month.
That's, well, once they go to the four day work week, if that's the anticipation, then that will, will happen.
I can tell you from my perspective, there's two things that affect that. Often, I'm out of town and we still do stuff over the internet. But the other is, is that we're trying to get the moving parts settled down. So that we have the backup documentation. Now Bianca may see it differently, she may sympathize, Derek is unorganized and I wish he'd stop doing that. And I'm okay with that criticism. Um, but I know from my perspective, we require everybody to get their stuff in that Monday before. So a week and a day before, but between her election duties, my duties and other stuff. We're simply trying to put it together. We work on it during the week, but it's usually tidied up at the end of Friday. That's my perspective, but Bianca, please. And be candid.
No, I mean, it's, I get it, the, you know, just getting everything done by the end of the week to post. When we do have conflicts or something does come up, I do ask, you know, can we post it a little bit earlier? Um, and it's always, they're, they're always very accommodating with that too, so. Do we stay evenings late? Yes, sometimes, but I get it because we have a lot on the agenda, but I know when. I would need a day off or. I would need a day off or need have something else prior, something in one other arrangement. It's like I am able to post on Thursday. Um, as long as I do.
We play into our week.
Yeah, but it's usually, yeah, I know that if I need to post the agenda on Thursday, I'll definitely discuss it with him first and it's all. It always happens where I'm able to, so.
But I I I will let you all know, please be candid as you visit with with members of the board because there are. There are things that they will see that I don't see.
Sounds good.
Be candid.
Not too candid.
If it's their fault, don't be candid. It's my fault. Tell them.
See where this is going.
And that's all I have on that. Thank you.
We're the stepchild for everything. Okay, uh, thank you. If there's no other questions, we'll go to Agenda Item thirteen, Mister Reed Larson.
Good morning again, Mister Chairman. At least I think it's still morning. Just real quick Supervisor Campbell, I could not possibly care less when you have your board meetings. So there's my input. The agenda item that you have before you, Derek and I have talked about this. Particular grant or project at the airport several times. And I know that I have also um visited with you about it in prior board meetings, but I don't find any record that you ever formally voted on it. Uh, which we need to do for the purposes of executing the grant. So that's, that's why it's before you. And I, a couple of things I wanted to point out to you. Number one is this runway overlay is part of ADOT's A P M S program. And because it is, they administer the project themselves and there, there are no additional soft costs, what I would call required from Greenlee County. They have their engineers design it and they have their construction management folks come out and babysit the contractor of all he's doing the work. So so we won't see those types of costs on this project. The other thing I wanted to point out to you is that in those discussions with Derek about this project. He said, be sure to let ADOT know that. We don't have the the big purse strings that some of the larger airports around the state do. And that we may have to go through our couch cushions to to come up with a match. And I I politely conveyed that to the state airport engineer and he was gracious enough to drop our required match from ten percent to five percent. So this is about a million dollar project and our match normally would be around a hundred K and it's, it's about half of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I, mine, and Mister Chairman, in in my mind, I thought we had approved this already.
And and it's quite possible that you did. I I know that that I visited about it. But I was giving you airport updates or whatever the circumstance was, but I went through all of my agenda. And this project's been on the burner for two years or more now. And I went through all my records going back a couple of years and I just couldn't find it.
I believe we've approved the project and and going out for the grant and working with ADOT. I don't think we've actually approved the the agreement per se.
I agree with.
With the badge.
Yeah.
Okay. We approve it again.
It can't hurt.
Yeah.
Well, I have moved that we approve of the request for execution of the grant agreement between the county and ADOT for the proposed runway overlay at the Greenlee County Airport that presented.
Nice second motion.
Have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and and Mister Larson, thank you for all you do and and I know you wear many hats and. And I hear lots of positive out there about how you're accommodating, how you answer people's questions. And so uh from the board, thank you for for that. It, when you do your job well. It's a reflection of us. So thank you.
Thank you. That that's good to hear. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Agenda item fourteen, Mister Repair.
Thank you. Um, this is a chart you've seen often. Um, I update you every month when we get our revenues in for the month. Um, we received our revenues, our, our notice of our revenues around the tenth or eleventh, that's when the Jimmy come in. Um, I'll pull this up just a little bit. This is our state shared sales tax revenue. You can see that, and and you'll notice this this highlighted in pink. That was the year that we had to give money back because of the the sales tax uh thing. We were made whole by by the company. Um, but it's sort of a messes with our analysis. Um, but you can see the trends. Um, in twenty one, twenty two, we are way up in this month. Um, last year we were above where we took in receipts for this year. This seems to be following a trend that we saw last week in CSA presentations as well as a after presentation that I attended on Friday. Um, sales tax receipts uh are down a bit and we, we know the dynamics behind that number. Um, we're, we're off on both our three year average as well as our uh one year average. Um, I'm going to switch over here before I come back to this slide. On our county revenues, again, we're down, we're down over the average, we're down over our historic um receipts. On what's important, however, is we're on pace or close to on pace for what we projected for revenue. That keeps the budget in balance. And so as we come down here, you'll see that we're, if if revenues stay as they have for the first four months of the year. The first, third, we would end up fifteen hundred dollars short of our account, you have sales tax projection. If we pull that number back over here into this other chart. We see that if if state shared sales tax revenue continues, we'd be three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars over projection. You combine those, we're at three twenty five over. You recall last month, we were four hundred and fifteen, I think, over projection. So we're, we're hewing pretty close to what we thought we would receive. And so that's a credit to conservative budgeting. Uh, it's a lot easier to deal with extra money that comes in than it is to deal with money that falls short. Every projection right now shows that the economy will continue to stay slowish. Interest rates will come down from the Fed. It's not trickling down yet into mortgage rates. It's trickling down into credit cards, consumer loans. Um, what that means for us is that inflation takes years to work its effect out of an economy. And so and and they slowed it on purpose, but I think these numbers will continue to hold barring some other. Um, and 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 people are very high. You may have watched the stock market the day after the election. It went through the roof. All three indexes that we watch. Went through the roof. They're settling back down to a new normal. But the general consensus is there's a good feeling in the country about where we're headed economically that generally translates into sales. And and if you're buying iPhones or, you know, whatever, it's got copper in it. It's a good thing. And so, um, anyway, we'll continue to keep that. I'm working on an analysis. It will take a little bit longer to and probably present, maybe in December, probably in January. Then analyzes our expenses through halfway through the year and see how we're doing. Sometimes those things are a little bit hard to um track. For example, elections, we spent most of our money we were going to spend. There'll be a little bit, but we spent most of it. Same with recorders voter registration. There could be a lot of money there. County Fair Budget will have been mostly spent by this point. Others should be more even trajectory. So we'll, we'll provide you some analysis on that. And that's what I have on budget and legislative stuff. Um, I will tell you that all of the House leadership has been, excuse me, this, the legislative leadership has been elected in both House and Senate. Um, the House has assigned chair, uh committee chairs, vice chairs. I have not read and maybe Richard knows. I don't think the Senate has done so yet. But it looks like they're organizing. There's a seventeen thirteen split in favor of Republicans in the Senate. There's a thirty three twenty seven split in favor of the Republicans in the House. That, and there's an election two years. So I don't know if they'll be as honorary as they were the last two years between the governor and the legislature, but I don't expect. Uwels of things to get done. Um, I expect there will be plenty of legislation put up there that knowing the governor will veto it so they can put her on a policy island. And and make her pay in the, in the general election two years from now. But we've seen this before. And so, um, that's about all we have a little bit of say in front of this point.
I I would say it on the uh Senate. On the House side, you have all new leadership and and on the Senate side, it stayed the same.
It's the same, yes. And and I, the people I've talked to feel pretty good. There's an interesting development that occurred in the House in response to the Senate, and that is that even though the Republican Party is getting a little tired of the Freedom Caucus. And and part of why we see Speaker Montenegro there is because he's not allied with some of the hardline Freedom Caucus members in the Senate. And and there's this sense that maybe we need to move past that. If that's the case, that bodes well for everybody. And that's what I have on budget and legislative.
Okay, any questions? If not, we'll turn time over to.
Okay, um, this week, well, tomorrow, the twentieth, um, is with an eco. That's all there is for the rest of the week. Next week. I still have a question mark for the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday. Are we, is that off? Not.
It will help, yeah. Yeah.
Do you have it? We've not received any outside, like outside of our office request, and I believe we can manage till December.
Okay, great. Take it out. Take it out.
Will do.
Take it out.
Um, next Thursday, Friday, it offices are closed for Thanksgiving. That's all we have for November. December sixth, Friday, County Managers, the Festival of Lights is Saturday, December seventh. Um, our board meeting in December is the tenth. Small counties on the eleventh and CSA on the twelfth. And the April conference is the twelfth, the tenth to the thirteenth.
And on the fourteenth, you have the uh light parade there in Duncan. And uh.
Lift off. Yes, I I hope it's a service dog.
And did you register us for the?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll add the light, the parade um in Duncan for the fourteenth.
Right. And and the eco, I don't know when that will be. I I have an idea that it'll be the same day as uh small counties generally. On the eleven.
Um, the eighteenth with uh. And then twenty third, that Monday is the start of winter break for both schools, Merencie and Duncan. Christmas, December twenty fifth, our offices are closed and we don't have a uh second board meeting scheduled for December. Um, going into January, um, I did put, um. Just following our current policy for our board meetings, I did put January seventh at eight and the twenty first at eight. Um, if the board does change that, we'll change those dates.
We probably would change it till that date, right? Of January, January, I mean, we wouldn't change.
No.
They decided to tell the seventh.
Yeah, we, we, we're planning on having a meeting on the seventh and 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 we will go forward as usual unless the board says let's do something different.
Okay. And and Derek, just, uh, the L P C, I'm sure you got that, uh. They'll want to disney, but you know, that's.
And I referred back to Penny and said that we'll work on that and see who gets that assignment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, January first, New Year's Day, our offices are closed. Duncan starts or begins their school, uh. First day back is January second to third, Thursday, and then Merencie starts on the sixth Monday. County Managers on the tenth. Um, small counties, eco and whiffa on the fifteenth. Um, and then the CSA, new supervisor orientation begins on the fifteenth and goes to the sixteenth. Um, CSA also on the sixteenth. And does session start on thirteenth?
Session starts on, yes, it begins on the, at the opening day.
That about it after I printed it, sorry.
Uh, you'll have the state of the state from the governor. That day.
Um, and then L P C begins on the twenty fourth of January. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you and thank you. Uh, does anybody have anything? Okay, thank you. Bianca, we appreciate that. Uh, we'll go to Agenda Item fifteen, uh consent agenda.
I saw movie where you produce extended agendas.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, we'll now go to Agenda Item sixteen, Supervisory Report, Mister Campbell.
Nothing for me for this week.
Mister Gomez.
I'll just chime in a couple of comments. I attended the small county forum that Navaho hosted. Good meeting, uh. Lots of, lots of dialogue uh between, between counties. I won't get specific on that and uh. And then we had our CSA meeting the following day. With. It's going in as a.
Liam Van Cazi.
Yeah, Van Cazi, uh, we will counting, be our new president. And Mister Miller will be stepping aside and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I'll, uh, I guess Mister Gomez did on the, the small counties and and CSA. Uh, Eastern Counties Organization, uh, they are definitely going to have a uh tour. They have uh. Almost a third again, new legislators. Uh, it's important uh that we. Uh, educate legislators on on. Issues that contain to the uh six eastern counties. Uh, and so, uh, they're talking about having it maybe even earlier. Uh, of course, every year you hear this legislator is going to get out early. The session is going to end out early. And what have we done for the last forty years? It's almost to the very ends. Uh, it's going to be interesting to, uh, with with the Democratic Governor and and both houses now uh in favor of uh. Of the Republicans. Uh, we're going to see how much uh really gets done. And I agree with Derek. Uh, they will be things. Passed specifically to put. Uh, the Democratic Party on. Uh, notice. Getting ready for an election in two years. Unfortunately, that's the way the game's played and and it's not. It's not conducive for progress for the state, but other than that, that's my comments.
I just have one more comment. That's small county, uh, speaking about dialogue. Uh, some of the, the, one of the main topics which we all addressed here today was, was housing. Where other small counties are landlocked as we are. We share, we share the frustration and everything and. Uh, but it seems like rooftops is a big topic in Arizona. Out of the metropolitan area of this, let's say. So anyway, I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, we will go Agenda Item seventeen. Uh, we have an executive session. And I think it's like, uh, let's take a five minute break and let's come back at at eleven twenty five. Six minutes, but hey, the recording off, everything.